All right, thank you. And when speaking, please turn your microphones on and pull them forward. Welcome to the March 13th, 2023 meeting of the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflan is excused in absent. Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
He's, he actually doesn't feel well tonight.
He just emailed, yeah. He won't be able to make it.
Okay. Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. McPartland?
Here.
Mr. Darpinno?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Ms. Strang is excused in absent. Mr. Drescher?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Wasn't paying attention. All right, we got everybody? All right, good. All right, let's see. So we have the meeting minutes from February 27th, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Move for approval by Mr. Darpinno. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McPartland. Any corrections or changes? I have none. Does Mr. Conley do those again? Mr. Conley, Laura, Mr. Conley, do those again?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, good job, Mr. Conley. So anybody else have any corrections or changes? All those in favor of approval of the minutes from the February 27th, 2023 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Nope, okay. February 27th, meeting minutes are approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move the privilege of the floor. Before we get started, just wanted to mention that at our last meeting, we had discussion later in the meeting about privilege of the floor, and we voted and decided and voted to invoke a five-minute roll, try to keep things moving along. So there will be a light that'll come on, green, when you get started, yellow as a warning, and then red when your five minutes are up. So I ask that people just summarize, and if you have a long letter, you can summarize it. Like I mentioned at every meeting, we all get copies, and so does the town board of all the letters and emails, and they also are included in the minutes, as you probably have seen. So we get more than enough opportunity to read what you have to say. So summarize, we'd appreciate it, okay? So with that said, I'm going to open privilege of the floor. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to listen to what you have to say. Privilege of the floor is open. All right.
Ursula Hall, 1310 Ruffner Road. I spoke a couple meetings ago. I continue to be opposed to the, you didn't start my timer. I continue to be opposed to the Mohawk Club's plan that comes out onto Ruffner Road. I was pleased to see that they had provided additional schemes that provided access to other streets that their property joins. I was disheartened to see their comments during the last meeting that they, you know, that they provided those, but they really have no intention of exploring those. I took great offense to that. So that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, good evening.
May I pull that microphone up a little bit, sir?
Yes.
Thank, just so you can, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board. Although I'm not a resident of Niskuna, I do have specific contacts. I'm a retired police officer from Schenectady.
You have your name for the record, please?
My name is Joey Lazari.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph Lazari, my name.
Is that my microphone turned down?
It is. Yeah.
Is it on?
It should be on, yeah.
Like I said, I'm not a resident of Niskuna, but I have specific contacts. Retired police officer from Schenectady, worked several years with the Niskuna Police Department. My wife graduated from Niskuna High School. I have a daughter that lives on Avon Crest. I have a grandchild that lives, goes to Birchwood School. So I have some vested and personal interest in Niskuna itself. My reasoning for being here is to advocate the Mohawk Club and its owner. We've been a member there for the past six years. Michael Rutherford is the CEO, obviously, and we've enjoyed it immensely. And what that man has done to this club in the past five, six years, from his own pocket, I make point of that, is just increase it profoundly. It's actually the crown jewel of Niskuna, as far as I'm concerned. And his proposal, along with Mr. Sweet and the developers, is to put on this new development, townhouses, and a couple houses of single-family homes. And I can understand the problems that are arising from the people from Ruffner Road, I guess, road, road, or also, as far as the logistics and the traffic. And then, obviously, it's going to be causing some difficulty with the infrastructure and the structure and the noise. But the plans that they have in place are extraordinary. I've seen the plans myself personally, and anything that Michael Rutherford does is five-star, period. So it's going to be a pristine development. You could probably be very, very proud of it. I think you'll really enjoy it as a whole, especially being in the community. Again, I'm here to promote the development and promote the Mohawk Club. I think it's a great, great asset for the Town and Niskuna, and I think, logistics-wise, I think there's been issues with the traffic on Ruffner Road. I understand that. I can understand that, specifically from being a police officer. I think with their developer, if they can find an alternate route to gain access to these apartments, it will be accomplished. Just have to give them some time and energy and, you know, good thought process to see what happens. But, you know, just to, just to put it on the back burner, slide through, I think is wrong idea. I think, like I said, I think it's a crown jewel of Niskuna. And once, once all the work is done and is developed, I think you'd be very, very proud. You're probably going to say, wow, we wish, we wish we did this sooner. So with that being said, and again, he has my full endorsement, the man is really, the man is really, he has a vision that's unbelievable for his family and for the community. So take that consideration, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tracy Morehouse. I live at 1206 Ruffner Road, directly across from where the new access is, or the new access they're proposing. I think an environmental study should be done for the water, for the animals there. You know, I understand the man's spending a lot of money in making the Mohawk Club wonderful, but he has 190 acres, and he also has ways to get in and out of it. I would prefer they do not get in and out of it so they can just overshoot it and drive and hit my house, because I am directly across from where it would come.
Thank you.
I'm back. Carol Holmes, 1301 Ruffner. With all due respect, sir, I'm going to really ask-
Please address the board.
I just wanted him to know, I forgot his name, so I didn't-
We want to keep order, please.
Okay. They say they're a five-star maintenance property. They are not a five-star rate maintenance property for people who surround the property. But inside the fence may be lovely, outside the fence is awful. Drive by, drive by where Linwood comes up. The fence is bent over in a number of places. It's an eyesore. The fence down my side of the property is an eyesore. I understand that the club members had a little meeting and to encourage them to come speak. That's all fine and dandy. They don't live on our street. They can have their club. I have no argument with them having a golf course. But I have an argument with them imposing onto my streets. It's fine to come up here and say, I don't live in Schenectady, my grandson can walk around in his neighborhood by Birchwood School. I have a grandson who walks up and down Ruffner Road. I don't want him hit by a car. I want him to have the freedom to do that. The club members are fine. I don't have a problem with them. We talk to them over the fence when they're playing. But they don't live there. And for people to come up and talk about this wonderful club that aren't living there is, is something that I don't think applies to what's going on in the situation. You need to still think about the traffic. You need to still think about the flood control, the water, and, and the animals. We have coyotes now running around in the neighborhood, because you're cutting down their place that they live. I think there are things other than, let's make the Mohawk Golf Club happy, because the residents aren't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christopher Dibble. I'm, I live in Niskuna. I work in Niskuna. And I just want to say what a positive thing I think Mohawk has been. I'm not a golfer, much of a golfer at least. My kids kind of grew up there. They learned to swim there. They learned to play golf there. I work in Niskuna. We have all of our business meetings there. And for years, I was scared that the club was going to go away, just because I felt it was a good use of the land. And I thought it was quite a big positive. We have, like I said, we have all of our business meetings there. We bring all the people who come to work at my business. We interview them at Mohawk Club. And so I was, you know, tremendously grateful that Rutherford took it on, restored it, and I hope we can do everything possible to keep it thriving.
Hi, I'm Paul Moore. I live at 136 Denise Drive. I'm in the land of the mushroom of the signs. I don't live right on Ruffner Road, but close enough that I, I drive through that every day. And I fully get and understand what their concerns are. If you've had a relatively calm, tranquil community, and then fear development coming in with additional traffic, you have kids, you walk through there yourself, you have dogs, you walk, I get it. It's totally understandable. On the other hand, Mohawk Golf Club, think what the alternative might be if there wasn't a golf course there. Think of that is all, if that were all developed and the traffic patterns that that would entail. I also wanted to reiterate what other folks have said about Mike Rutherford. Mike is a, he's a local kid. He grew up in Schenectady. He does everything top-notch. You look at the investment that's been made in Mohawk Golf Club, and while I don't live directly across the street from it, I've got to believe that the view from across the street is better than it's been in any of the 18 years that I've been a member there. And he's continuing to do improvements and will continue to do improvements. So while development is probably inevitable and should be inevitable in a growing progressive community like Niskuna, at least you have the benefit of having local people who have this community's best, best hopes and wishes at their, at the heart of what they're doing. And I just, if you don't know Mike, I hope you get it, take a chance to get to know him. He's a class act, and he'll do a great job for you. Thank you very much.
Stephen Clemente, 1231 Ruffner Road. I'm reading my wife and Kathy and I's position. I write to express our strong opposition to the proposed residential development of the Mohawk Golf Club as proposed in Schema Two or Option Two. First, a fact that needs to be noted this evening, and then a couple of questions. The Mohawk Golf Club currently consists of 190 acres, according to Mr. Bill Sweet's statement in the last meeting two weeks ago here. As part of that acreage, the Mohawk Golf Club has 2,022 linear feet of road frontage on Balltown Road and 690 feet of road frontage on Union Street. Yet with that entire frontage, and I asked the board, how many proposals have been submitted with ingress and egress to and from those streets? The answer is two out of 12, two. Okay? I submit to the board that that is telling in itself. They insist on disrupting a longstanding neighborhood over a disruption to the course. Please ask yourselves, why have no other areas of the 190 acres been considered for the residential development? Areas that are already cleared of trees, which lowers the expense. What is so significant about this woodlot that makes it special? The answer is water and sewer access, regardless of the cost to us residents. The Mohawk Golf Club does not give a tinker's dam about that neighborhood, and that's been apparent over the last three months of meetings I've been attending. I respectfully, respectfully to the board, should a privately held commercial concern trump the concerns of a neighborhood with hundreds of residents in opposition, paying more in taxes than the privately held concern? Add them up. There's 150 people I submitted tonight for the petition. Take their houses, add up the taxes. We are not against development, which they have a right to do on their property, but we are against development that would significantly reduce our quality of life to hundreds of residents of the existing Ruffner Road neighborhood. Tonight, I will submit 48 other people, which I have, to Laura, to the board in opposition to the development as proposed. That makes it 150, and there are people contacting us every day that are opposed to it. Our concerns with this are, this new option are what they were with the last ones. Sewer capacity, water capacity, safety for our residents, children and pets, the water that's in our backyards right now that may not improve with the development, the loss of the character in the green space environment, including all the animals that live there. You don't know how wild it really is. I submitted this week the coyote pictures, the bald eagle pictures to Laura, and there's lots more coming with foxes and turkey and deer and a million different kinds of bird species. In conclusion, we urge the board to require a full environmental impact study, the long form, to document the deficiencies in the Mohawk Golf Club's proposal and have them addressed. If the Russell Road Town Water and Sewer Segment of the town system cannot handle capacity, who bears the cost of that? It's the residents that do, and then the taxpayers of the Town and Niskuna. We don't need to carry that cost for any private expansion of a development added to our already regionally high Niskuna taxes. Our thanks to the board tonight for your consideration in this process.
Jonathan Valencourt, 1274 Ruffner Road. I wanted to come speak today with respect to the updated proposal that came in. Just wanted to note a couple of items for consideration as plans continue through the, the process. One is ambient light concerns. Currently, we'd be replacing, potentially replacing a wooded area with housing. I would implore the board to work with the developer to minimize exterior lighting and prohibit the use of street lighting. That would be consistent with the town or the area that they're attempting to integrate within and would aid in mitigating as much ambient lighting concerns as possible. I would also, you know, propose that the board consider when assessing this, this most recent plan, potentially to help address or mitigate some of the concerns with flow-through traffic and danger to residents and kids, a no-left turn coming out of the new proposed road. That would help ensure that all traffic from the proposed development is diverted onto Rosendale Road as opposed to through the development. While it wasn't provided or indicated in the updated plan, ensuring that no monument sign was added, I'm not aware if there is sufficient space within the paper street to put a monument sign. But I would, you know, consider prohibiting a monument sign being added, even if space was available. It wouldn't be consistent with the, the area. And there's probably sufficient space on the private property in order to add a monument sign or information if necessary. So those are considerations I would implement. Also, water and sewer access are concerns, especially tying into the, the supply lines in the current area. I know just this week I've had significant air bubbles in my lines, so it indicates that there are potential concerns with the supply going to the area. Further studies, I think, would be appropriate before moving this on significantly. Additionally, I have not seen any data supporting the impact to schools. That has been asked previous times by myself and by board members. There have been no indications as to the impact for the school, the impact to the capital improvement project that the school is going on, therefore the significant tax burden town residents may be having to bear because of this development. And additionally, you know, I understand that they're looking at setback limits and keeping space, you know, open space available. As we increase the lot lines of this in order to get the open space percentages to meet code, I'm worried that it just opens up the opportunity for additional deforestation later on by the owners of that property. So I think trying to find the balance that maintains as much existing wooded property as possible would be beneficial. In fact, if, if some type of variance was needed in order to minimize the lot sizes, but while maintaining wooded space, I think that would be beneficial for residents and be in line with the intent of, of kind of the open space, of what we're trying to do to, to aid residents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Nicholson, and I reside currently in Niskuna in 208 Agostino Avenue. And I've been a resident of Niskuna for the last 37 years. I've raised my family here. My husband and I continue to, to live here. We feel very much a part of the Niskuna community. Our friends and family largely live in Niskuna, and it's our hope that in the decades to come, we'll continue to live in Niskuna. But we, like many other aging Niskunans, and it pains me to say that, are thinking that it's time that we need to explore realistic places to live for the longer term. And the current housing situation that we find ourselves in is such that we're in a large house, much larger than our needs. And when I went on Realtor.com today to look for alternatives such as townhouses in Niskuna, I found exactly zero. So I feel very fortunate that, as admittedly a member of the Mohawk Golf Club, that Mike Rutherford came forward and saved the club from potentially going into foreclosure by a bank and ending up being potentially sold as single-dwelling houses for hundreds of families to move in. And I, I can see why people might want to do that, but I'd hate to see us lose a golf club, green space, and a club that's being run by standards set by the Audubon Society. So I do think there is a concern for the ecology and the wildlife that the club is really trying to support. That being said, I would love to see the development of a community, a neighborhood that I could continue to be part of, so that my husband and I could stay here, we could stay close to our grandchildren, to our children, and continue to be really part of the town. I know that change is difficult. I've lived in Niskuna, I've seen changes, I've seen development. It's never pretty when it's in your backyard, but yet somehow, once the changes happen, we adapt to them and we grow, and our neighborhood becomes that much larger. So I hope that as you were all planning and reviewing the options that you have and trying to make, what I know you want to make the best decision for the community, you'll look at the community as a whole, and I hope that you'll consider the grandchildren who would like their grandparents to stay nearby, working parents who are hoping that they'll have grandparents available to help on days like tomorrow when school will be closed, when they need that extra help, and they'd like it to be local. And I hope that you'll consider the whole community and not thinking that elders who are part of the community need to move elsewhere to have a living kind of situation that's conducive to maintaining independence as we age. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Howard Meyer. I live at 1166 Ruffner. So the issue for us tonight is our community, our little Ruffner Road community that many of us have lived on, 25 years, 40-something years, and, and many people have just moved in. But we all live there for the nature, the ambiance, the beauty of the Ruffner Road community. I personally, and I'm sure most of us, don't have any issue with building townhouses or developing the 195 acres. If you want to put all that traffic onto Balltown, all that traffic onto Union, go ahead, that's fine. If, if you guys decide we need more townhouses in Niskuna, and you want to build them, and you put the traffic on Union, Balltown, that's fine. But you're asking to make these changes and impact Ruffner Road and a, a small, close-knit community, and we're being asked to sacrifice for the good of the golf course, for the good of the guy that owns the golf course, for the lady that wants to have a townhouse in Niskuna. I don't regret those people, their prosperity or, or their closeness to their grandchildren. It's my hope that you don't impact my family, my neighbors, our little community. We need to find a way where if, if they need to, they can get what they need and put their cars and all their issues onto Balltown or, or Union Street, not onto Ruffner. Thank you.
Thank you. Just pulling your seats down front, if you'd like to come down front,
Good evening. My name's Don Kinsella. I live at 180 Fieldstone Drive in the Fieldstone Estates neighborhood. Lived there for about the past 10 years. We've lived in Niskuna for more than 40 years, and we've lived in three of the four neighborhoods that would be impacted by this proposal. We've lived at the corner of Peters Lane and Brow Road. We've lived on Ruffner Road, and we've lived at the corner of Linwood and Fox Howl. So we've been in Rosendale Estates, Hawthorne Hills, and I forget the neighborhood where Brow Road is. But in any event, we, we love the community. We want to stay in the community. We live in a townhouse at this point, and we feel that this proposal presents an opportunity, as Lynn Nicholson mentioned a few minutes ago, for people to stay in the community who lived here for a number of years, to be able to buy a townhome or a new single-family home that would be relatively low maintenance and in a beautiful area. What's important to people in Niskuna is the quality of the life in the neighborhoods. And what's important is that the land in the neighborhood be used for its best use. Right now, it's a wood, woods that appear to be, I know I'm a member at Mohawk, I've lost plenty of golf balls in there. There's a lot of trash wood in there. It's not a pristine hiking trail-type woods. And there, the town has plenty of parks to, for people who want to get outdoors and take hikes. We have one right across from our townhouse now in Fieldstone. This area, we feel if, if the townhouse project were to go forward, the townhouse and the homes, it would provide a walkway to the other neighborhood as proposed to the Country Club Estates neighborhood. And as I understand it, that there would be better drainage of the area where the woods is. It should not be any problem to hook into the storm sewer system of the town, the sanitary sewer, obtain adequate water supply, and that sort of thing. So as far as we're concerned, it would improve the quality of life in terms of the residence areas in Niskuna. It would also have an impact on the tax base, obviously. 22 living units. 22 living units that would presumably sell for a fairly high price are going to add significantly to the tax base, which is important to everyone, and it's important to keeping people in the community who might otherwise leave once they retire and whatnot. And it should help hold down the taxes for all the other residents of the town. The other issue that's been brought up repeatedly is the traffic. And again, as I indicated, we've lived in three of the four neighborhoods. We lived on Peters Lane and Row Road when there were only two roads out of that neighborhood, McGovern and Hilltop. Waymer Lane cut through. Took a walk down the cut through for Waymer Lane one day, found the house on Ruffner Road that we bought. From Ruffner Road, Mountain Top was connected down to Hedgewood. Linwood finally came up all the way from Rose Hill Boulevard. So we're familiar with all the traffic that does or doesn't increase in the neighborhood as a result. And Niskuna is the capital of shortcuts. And everybody in Niskuna finds every shortcut they can to avoid Balltown Road. From where I live in Fieldstone, probably go down Ruffner Road 10 times every week just to avoid going on Balltown Road in order to get over to the center of town. So the development there isn't going to increase.
Could you summarize, sir? You're out of time.
Pardon me?
Could you summarize? You're out of time, please.
Sure, thank you. So as far as we're concerned, having 20 more residents there is going to provide about two or three cars more per hour in a given day going down the road. And we've lived there, we lived through whatever traffic increases there were, as there were more connections, and we submit that this is a great opportunity for the town to have a new neighborhood, a small part of a neighborhood that would take care of a lot of the residents who might otherwise leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Mason. I live at 2144 Mountain View Avenue in Niskuna. I've spoken to you before about the proposed development of the wild area known, owned by Mohawk Golf Club. And I thank you again for sharing your time, your willingness to listen, and mostly for your patience. My understanding is that the developer perceives a need for senior housing and believes that he can help out by destroying a shelter for wildlife and constructing single and two-family units that would be sold in the range of 500,000 to 750,000 apiece. I know many senior citizens in Niskuna, those who can afford this kind of luxury also have homes in the sunbelt where they can play golf or whatever all year round. They return to the north for warm months and don't stay a day over six months because they are residents of these warmer states where the taxes are much lower. Wealthier folks don't need this particular service as they have their own tastes and preferences and can hire their own contractor to build a home for them. And because their primary residence is now elsewhere, they don't have the same stake in the community as those who reside here permanently, although they require the same services. If the developer wants to fulfill a need, I suggest that he builds where the need is greatest, on the bus line, maybe Union Street, so seniors who really need help can get their appointments, run their errands, and live the full life they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Marlene Lauks. I live at 1191 Ruffner Road. I live, in fact, where they would be cutting through, so they would make my lot a corner lot if this happened. Clearly, I don't like that. But I also think it's interesting that there are many people weighing in tonight who don't live on Ruffner Road, who live in other places and feel that they need to have a say in what's happening on our street. It sounds like some people are suggesting that the Mohawk, that we're wanting to do away with the Country Club. Well, we're not. We don't, it's lovely, it can stay there, it can continue. As they said in the thing, you know, they hold clinics there, they do parties, they do lots of things supposedly for the community, and they can continue doing that. We're not suggesting that they do anything other than they already are. All we're asking is that they don't mess around with our houses and our traffic. And the proposal about townhouses, again, most retiring people are looking for ranches. I don't think that's what they're proposing to do there. Also, I'm losing my train of thought just a little bit. Anyway, I just, you know, oh, the thing about developing the whole thing eventually, that would have to come before the zoning board and your planning commission. And I doubt very much that you would pass on something as crazy as putting 300 new houses in there. So, you know, that just seems an impractical thing. All I'm saying is, you know, they can have the Country Club, but let us have our houses as we have them.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm sure you got some people backed up online also, Laura?
Yes.
Speak? Okay.
Louisa Lombardo, 1242 Ruffner Road. And I have, this has been a very educational experience for me and probably a lot of other people, just how the process works. And I have said my spiel to this board, to that board, and my whole thing goes back to that comprehensive plan. And listening to AMC Radio this morning, they had a news article how the town of Gilderlin is now in the process of rewriting their comprehensive plan for their town, and how important that is, and how their vision of that town and how they view it in the future will help to define some of the codes and the zoning and things like that. And I thought, yes, that's what we're going through here at Niskuna. And so it's not just about Ruffner Road, it's about our whole town. And what is our vision as townpeople for our town? Do we want to keep the integrity of existing neighborhoods? How does development impact and affect existing neighborhoods? And does it even matter? Our wonderful town historian, Dennis Brennan, I'll give him a shout out. He's had wonderful articles that he writes about the town and the history and how it's important to keep the integrity. And the Country Club is a lovely place. I'm not a member, but I've been a guest there frequently over the years for batz mitzvahs and showers and luncheons with, it's a lovely place. How does that development not only impact our little road, but the whole town in general? And I know it's a very heavy decision to make, it's not a popularity contest, you know, it's like, oh, we have three or four and four against. It's not about taking votes. But again, analyzing the information, but also, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And what impact does this development, such as it is, what effect does it have in our community? Because I think everybody here loves our community. I know I do.
Thank you.
Will not be directly affected by this. I've spoken to you guys before. Thank you for being able to sit up there and not fall asleep. You get a gold star, all of you. I'm just going to bring a few issues. One issue is, is that if you look at the quality of the homes on Ruffner Road and the neighborhood, the amount of tax base there, the amount of money that has been put into those houses every year compared to what's going on in the golf course, I think there's no comparison. There's love, there's appreciation. Now, I have learned, just by coming to these meetings, that a lot of money was put into the golf course. I drive by the golf course every day. I had no idea any money was put into that because it's a hidden jewel. I'm not criticizing, it's a jewel. It's lovely, it's wonderful. I've been on it twice. I don't play golf. I'm not, they can do whatever they want, but they have the access and the ability to do it without affecting the neighborhood. The neighborhood is one of the golden things to keep Niskuna and makes Niskuna, Niskuna. That's all I have to say tonight. I'll be back again.
Thank you. Anybody else here before we go virtual? Okay.
I'm a shyer one, but I'm going to speak.
All right.
I sent you a letter. My name is Deb Fries and I live at 2508 Waymer Lane. I have lived there for over 30 years. I'm a retired teacher of this district and I love our town. I am appalled at this proposal. I am saddened, I am stunned, I am shocked. I'm not anti-development. I don't think you destroy a historic neighborhood that I grew up adoring. The main reason why I moved to Niskuna was Ruffner Road. I walked on it, I had a friend on it, I walk on it every single day. You don't destroy these historic neighborhoods to extend a private industry like the Mohawk Club. I've been there too. They've hosted events for the charity that I live for, the one that's going to cure my son's disease that is right now. And I love my neighbors, all of you have been, have your say and you have a right to your say. But as I wrote you in my letter, we have trusted you to do what's right. This is not right. You don't have an access from an historic neighborhood. You don't destroy a neighborhood to create another. This is just wrong. Find another way. I saw Baldi go the other day myself, and I was, I just stood there in awe. This is how we're raising our children? And by the way, I'm a grandma too, and I'm staying in a little house so that I can be near my grandchildren. I don't need to buy a $500,000 home. I'm still a Niskuna resident, I still pay my taxes, and I'm proud of our district, and I thank you all for your patience in this very difficult situation that you're dealing with. I appreciate you hearing my voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy McDonald, 1317 Ruffner Road. Ruffner Road is a busy street. We have a lot of access roads coming into it. It's a huge cut through getting to the high school. I don't think we deserve to have another access road and dumping more traffic onto us. People, I walk my dog every day, people routinely fly through the stop sign. It's just the nature of the road. So we'd like to see that not increased. I also have been, for many years, we've lived in Niskuna for over 30 years, previously on South Country Club Drive, and we have not found the Mohawk Club to be very considerate neighbors. They don't take care of their fencing, as previously stated, not only where Linwood comes up to Ruffner, but also East Country Club and North Country Club, that is just horrendous looking. And they don't maintain their property up to the road like all of us do. And I know we, they don't own the property up to the road, nor do any of us, but we still maintain our property up to the road because we're considerate neighbors. And it's been very disappointing for the past 30-plus years to see how that they don't care about the neighborhoods that they border, as far as that goes. And I know that they provide services to some charities and whatnot, and they try to help in the community, but not directly to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Joel Bysalon, Bysalon Properties, Berkeley, I'm in Niskuna. It's pretty obvious that I'm in favor of the development. I think it's a great, great proposal. High-end homes in townhomes along a golf course, which is an asset to the community, is a great, great thing. A lot of people, obviously along Ruffner Road, are going to disagree, but you really can't dump those, those, those traffic counts onto Country Club. The DOT won't allow another road cut on Balltown Road. You know, if you force the developer to put a road all through the golf course, all the way to Union Street, that's going to make the project not viable, all right? But you know, I'm ultimately concerned about the sewerage, right? You know, the developer right now is showing individual grinder pumps on the houses pumping up to a sewer on Ruffner. And I presume that that Ruffner flow flows down towards, you know, our Kelts Farm, all right? And we all know that, you know, when we put in Kelts Farm, that, you know, that 15-inch line is at capacity, all right? So, I mean, I see in the notes that they want to go to a public hearing and say the devil's in the detail, you know, with the sewer and the water, water's no concern, but the sewer at a later date. Well, you really have to address that before you do anything, all right? You know, the project is not viable if that sewerage goes towards Kelts Farm. You know, if it goes towards Kelts Farm, we all know that from Blatnik Park down to the treatment station, that the town's going to have to invest a significant amount of money, you know, to upgrade that line, you know? And for, to try to force the developer, you know, to pay for the upgrade is, you know, is not going to happen, all right? So, you know, they have to come up with a different way. You know, if they put in a pumping station, they're going to have to pump a long ways, probably to Union Street and go to Schenectady, all right? Or else, well, I think that's the only way, you know, through their property to Union Street. You know, they can't pump, dig up Ruffner Road, go all the way down to Rosendale. That wouldn't be viable probably either. That may be a consideration, but I don't think that, I don't think that would work, right? And just one other detail that I wanted to mention too is would, I saw in the meeting notes, and I know this for a fact, that, you know, Niskuna doesn't allow the individual grinder pumps. Well, we just finished a subdivision in Clifton Park, and the grinder pumps are external to the home, owned by the homeowner. And guess what? They're made by E1, you know, Environment One. You know, so we're the only town in the area that doesn't allow individual grinder pumps owned by the homeowner, and they're made in Niskuna. You know, Jamie Puccioni just, you know, talked about the accolades of, you know, the momentum in E1. Well, you know, they're made in our town and we don't allow them, which is highly ironic to me. So I really think the town should reconsider that, you know? I'm not a salesperson for anyone, by the way. But, so, I really think that the developer has to come in and address, you know, the sewage first. But in my mind, you know, if you look at towns, you take advantage of access. If you have river access, you want to build townhomes and high-end homes, kind of like Rivers Ledge, all right? And you take advantage of that scenic, all right? The same thing with this golf course, you know, putting, geez, putting, putting homes, you know, high-end homes, townhomes along golf course, I think is, I'm sure I'll get booed for it, but, you know, I think, I think it's a great idea. But again, look at the sewage, don't send it down towards Kelts. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we heard a lot of people talk about, we do have townhomes and we do have ranches for sale on Kelts Farm.
Thanks, Joel. I knew that was coming. All right. Anybody else here before we go virtual? There we go. We've got a couple.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Mike Mason. I live at 2144 Mountain View. And I've walked the neighborhood, looked at it. I hear a lot of talk about the sewers, the waters. Nobody's mentioned the roads. They're all the same width, Ruffner, Hedgewood, Mountain View, Hawthorne, they're all the same width. The driving surface is maybe 21 feet. It's a two-lane road, no parking. If you park on the road, it's a real tight squeeze. It slows the traffic way down. The roads were built back in the 50s, they're not 2020 roads. And we have a lot of The roads were built back in the 50s. They're not 2020 roads. And we have a lot of lawn services there parked on the road. Turns the road into one-lane roads. And I know Niskiuna has collectors, major collectors, and feeders. Well, I'm not sure what the category of Roughner is, but it's the same width of all the rest of the roads. So what I see is, you're gonna, we're talking increasing the sewers, the waters, the roads. And matter of fact, the roads in, in the Roughner area didn't always have always stops, but now they have always stops. If there's an accident on the road, it winds up on somebody's lawn because the lawn comes right up to what you call Niskiuna curbs. And they're not driving surfaces. The driving surface is 21 feet. And then all those roads are the same. And personally, I don't, I don't think that they would be built the same way for a community that size today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's John Baronowski. I live at 1101 Hedgewood Lane. Just wanna make a couple of general comments. First of all, my wife and I moved here a mere two and a half years ago. But that's meaningful to me because we, we fled Orange County downstate to be here. At the time, before we left, I was a member of the Woodbury Comprehensive Plan Committee when they redid their comprehensive plan. You may know Woodbury is famous for Woodbury Common Outlets. And there, managing the use of land is a very complex and fraught experience. Not to say that it isn't in every community, but having a single taxpayer who provides millions and millions of dollars of tax revenue every year really complicates the situation. I just wanted to make a comment about the, the, the average density development criteria and how they apply to this, this application by the Mohawk Golf Club. In the Woodbury Comprehensive Plan, there was something very similar to the average density development. It was called clustering, which you're certainly familiar with. At the time, Woodbury was able to set a minimum parcel size of 100 acres to which their clustering or ADD concept could be applied. My point is to say that the, the small, the relatively small size of this piece of property that the applicant's proposing to develop, if it brings any benefit to the community, as would be anticipated by ADD, that benefit is far, far out of proportion to the damage it would cause to the neighborhood and the town. So I find that it's an inappropriate use of an ADD concept to a piece of property that is this small. I also object to what I would call a piecemeal disassembly of a large tract of land like this. I believe that when the day comes, as it certainly will, that there are plans for the rest of this property, however far in the future that might be, or however near, that it's an opportunity for this board, the neighborhood, and the town at large to do something valuable for the continuing appeal of Niskiuna. What I see happening here is piecemeal stripping away of a piece of, of the property. Therefore, in the future, making your input into what happens with the property less meaningful. I hear some talk tonight about the fact that this piece of woodland is less than valuable. And I would argue that it, looking at it as a whole, the whole 190 acres, that is in fact, one of the most valuable pieces of property in terms of the future of how the town might be involved in what happens to it. So I, I really, I think it, it takes something away from your authority and your judgment as a board once a property owner starts stripping off pieces of the land and developing them on that piecemeal basis. So I, I have to express my dismay at the nature of this proposal and I urge you to think carefully about proceeding with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here for privilege of the floor? Hey, Laura, could you, who we got online? Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Before I call names, and I'll just go through the list of names up online, I wanted to mention that the board received emails and acknowledged Charles Horowitz, 1223 Roughner Road, Aidan Schweitzer, 1277 Roughner Road, Theresa Ebert, and Masud Savarsada, Margaret Corey, 12529 Hilltop Road, Carol Furman, 1269 Roughner Road, Liz and Seth Martin, 1282 Roughner Road, Sean Morgan and Jennifer Reagan, 1357 Roughner Road, Amy Pritchard, 1241 Roughner Road, Linda Betzweiser, and George Young, 1241 Roughner Road. I'm actually gonna call from my computers because they can read it better. No, I'm not. Amanda. Amanda, yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening. It's Dennis and Amanda. We are at 1122 Roughner Road. And thank you for allowing us to, to have an opportunity to air our thoughts and concerns about this proposal. As someone who has lived here again for the past 12 years, we came, as you've heard from, from others, we came here because of the quality of life. We came here because of the, the look, the feel of this neighborhood. The character of this neighborhood is what's, what's, I believe to be the most selling piece for anyone to come to Niskiuna. The taxes are high, but they're worth paying the taxes because it's the quality of life. We're raising our, our children here and we see more and more young families moving into the neighborhood. And it's wonderful to see young kids running around. But I don't know how safe that will be when we increase the traffic. I'm glad that, that my other neighbors have raised the concerns about, about the roads, for example. Or as my, my, my neighbor, John, just spoke so eloquently on, on what had happened down in Woodbury Commons and that whole region. So I just stand here again tonight to oppose this proposal. I think that the, the impact will, will outweigh the benefits to the community in the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next person I see is Rita Fleishman. Rita, would you like to speak? Okay, she said, "No, thank you." Therese Assalian. No, I don't, I don't think, is she? Christopher Morris. Carrie Kirkton.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you so much. My name is Carrie Kirkton. I live at 1322 Roughner Road. And I'm here with my husband and two daughters who are in middle school, one in middle school and one in elementary school. And I just wanted to voice my opinion about the opposition to this particular plan. We had the fortunate ability to move here to this amazing community 17 years ago when my husband took a job at Union College. And we lived over near Hillside Elementary for the first seven years that we were here, excuse me, first 10 years we were here, and have been here in the Roughner Road neighborhood for the last seven years. And I remember when we first moved here and from Southern California where housing was astronomical, even at that time, 17 years ago, that I was just amazed at what an amazing, gorgeous, pristine neighborhood that could still exist. And to have the historic beauty of these homes maintained. And this is, you know, when I drove down Hawthorne and Roughner, those were the homes that I really did aspire to eventually move to. And we did, like I said, seven years ago. And what a special, amazing neighborhood it is. It's just beautiful, large lots, mature trees. And I just remember thinking, again, what a special area this is, that everything doesn't look like every other house. And I think that's part of the thing that keeps eating away at me, that even though I'm not against development, to think that in this amazing, pristine area of beautiful environment, that there are gonna be this set of townhomes that look like every other cookie cutter townhome I could drive by in Saratoga County or Clifton Park really irs me. It really upsets me that it's going to destroy really the look of what this neighborhood is and, and the foundation that this neighborhood was built on. So, I guess what I would say, you know, to that end, that the thing that I'm remembering back to a few meetings ago, that I think we have to remember, that the development of this particular neighborhood is not necessary to keep this club solvent. I don't think anyone here is against having the Mohawk Club in their backyard. It's wonderful that there's pristine green space there. And if we remember what Mike said, like I said, two meetings ago, it was point-blank asked to him if this was necessary to keep it solvent. And I remember that meeting, that no, it was not. They are not in a dire, dire financial situation. This is not necessary to keeping this club alive. So, I think what we need to do is just really keep in mind that these changes to the neighborhood potentially infect the environment in a, in a potentially deleterious way. We need a full review of any plans that could take place and really just make very thoughtful and considerate, you know, thoughts about, about this, about your position. There are a lot of people here that are there in person on both sides of this. And I just hope that the town board will really give careful consideration about this issue that means so much to so many. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next person I see is Paul Landau, and I apologize if you're an applicant, I can't tell. Would, did you like to speak, Paul Landau?
I am an applicant for a different project, but it's been enjoyable listening to everybody. Thank you.
Sure.
Rebecca Shirt-Laff.
No additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Melanie Romer.
Thank you. So I am Melanie Romer. I live at 1250 Roughner Road. My concerns echo that of my Roughner Road neighbors. And you've heard those concerns over the past several months, so I'm not going to repeat them. However, you know, although we have these concerns for the land, we do understand that Mohawk has a right to develop their own land. However, this development is not in addition to Roughner Road. You've heard multiple people tonight from Mohawk Golf Club wanting to move into these proposed homes. And I think that's wonderful for them and I understand that want. But in reality, Mohawk is wanting to create a new golf course neighborhood. My suggestion is making that what it is then, a private golf course neighborhood. Or for those people wanting a new townhome, just like the gentleman said before, find a nice spot at Kelts Farm. Overall, I just think there are other ways to go about doing this and not affecting the people on Roughner Road. At this point, the negatives greatly outweigh any positives that there might be. That's really all I have to say and I really appreciate you listening to our concerns over the past few months.
Thank you.
I see a phone number that ends in 76. It's possible, if you joined later, that you may have to press star six to unmute yourself, but phone number that ends in 76. Okay. I see Melissa Cumming, Cummins.
Good evening. I live at 26 South Vagan Ave. Tonight, I would like to continue to strongly oppose any and all plans for the 3900 State Street project. As you can imagine, the lights here, if you can see, are pretty bright. This is to the left side of my home. And that is the Kia dealership directly across is the reconditioning lot. With this proposal, they want to remove two houses, several trees, and make it a parking lot. The lights they will be adding will be such an addition to the ones that are already here. I don't know if we'll know if it's day or night. But the haulers continue to be an issue and they are unloading their cars in the street of South Vagan and State Street. I have sent previously photos and videos of this. The snow certainly makes it more dangerous and complicated. I have not yet seen a delivery plan for the haulers, but I would like to see that and how it would be executed safely for everyone, including my children, who will be living directly across the street, parking lot and the entrance directly in front of my home. My children are two and three and seven. And I just, this is not a good thing for, for my family at all. We'll be completely sandwiched by cars on every side. I mean, that's not what I signed up for. And it will most certainly decrease the value of my property and make it less desirable to anyone else that would even come. The very large tree across the street, that usually houses migratory birds, they have yet to return this spring. I have spoken with the DEC today for the second time and they said to just let them know when the birds return and they have not yet come as of today. And, and lastly, just for the record, I, I just would like it to show that I was never personally approached or contacted by Matthews, Kia, or anyone from there regarding this plan at all. I think that's all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next person I see is another phone number ending in star four one. If you would like to speak, you need to probably press star six to unmute yourself. And then the last person I see online is Ryan Davis.
Hi. We'd just like to reiterate that we have the same current concerns about the impact of the infrastructure, particularly sewer, and the need for a access road on Roughner Road we completely disagree with.
Thank you.
It's everyone I see, Sherman.
Okay. I'll just ask, before we close privilege of the floor, anyone here, anything else? Anybody we missed? And we'll ask online one time also and then we'll close privilege of the floor.
My name is Charlie Campione. I live at 13 Oakmont Street in Niskiuna. My wife and I moved to Niskiuna in 2006 so that my son could have the opportunity to go to school in Niskiuna School District to have a, more opportunity for his betterment of his future. He graduated high school in 2010, yet we remain in Niskiuna in a four-bedroom home and pay enormous taxes because we love Niskiuna. And I live a mile from the Mohawk Golf Course. So I consider everyone in this room part of my community and part, and are my neighbors. Just wanna point out a couple of things. I used, I'm an ex-president of the Mohawk Club. So I joined the Mohawk Club 16 years ago. I got engaged with the board and I love the place and I love the people. So I committed myself to make it better. I can tell everyone for the record, when it was a member-owned club, we struggled financially for several years, for decades. And Mike Rutherford was the savior of that golf club when he bought it. I'm not saying it to say that he's the savior of the world, but he saved a community of people that have been together for 50 years. And he cares about his neighborhoods. There are many people that live in the adjoining neighborhood that, that have pool memberships because their homes are so tightly spaced that they can't have a pool in their own yard. And so he's opened that up and allowed people to come and access the pool. People made comments about the fencing and things like that. Yes, the fencing, that's been there for decades. But you can't address everything in one year. So he cares about the neighborhood, he cares about the people, not just that. He cares about the people, not just at the club. He's a very kind, generous person. If you just think about it as a community and what's the best for the community overall. Like I said, I, I don't need to live in Niskiuna. I don't like paying the taxes in Niskiuna, but I choose to stay in Niskiuna because of the community. Okay? I also wanted to point out that I moved here, uh, from Amsterdam, from the town of Amsterdam. And they wanted to put a solar farm across the street from property that I inherited from my parents. I was just like a lot of people in this room. I didn't want it. I didn't want to look at it. I didn't want to have it affecting my, my property value. I fought it. I delayed the project enough so that the developer had to go and seek another option. So I thought I won. I also have property in the town of Mayfield, and no, I'm not a wealthy person. It's not lakefront property. But I just learned that a farmer who has several acres of land behind my camp is going to put a solar farm on it. So my point is change happens. It may not happen today. I thought I won. I thought I pushed it out. I wouldn't have to look at it. And guess what? It's going to be right in my backyard again. So just all these concerns with sewer and water and all these things, there are local codes, regulations, state codes and regulations that have to be met. Nothing's going to be overlooked if it's not, you know, be, if it can't be approved based on compliance to those regulations, it won't be approved. So I understand the fears, but you got to let that take its course when it goes through the, the permitting process and, and look at the compliance to the codes and regulations. Regarding the traffic, I can tell you when I was on the board, we looked at going on to Balltown Road, Union Street. If you just think about the traffic pattern on those two streets currently, there is no way you can add more volume with new curb cuts on, on those streets. And so I just implore everybody to just be neighbors, think about it, and remember it, it may not, if it doesn't happen now, something else will happen. There may be a solar farm put on there, right? You don't know what's going to happen in the future, so work together for the best option.
Thank you. Okay. All right, last call for Privilege of the Floor. Anybody here, president would like to speak?
Jeff Hall, 1310 Ruffner Road. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but, uh, I, I think I got to address a couple of things. Uh, I don't know Mr. Rutherford. Everybody says he's a nice guy, great guy, may well be. But I think that putting more traffic on Ruffner Road is going to be detrimental to the character of the community. And I think that, you know, I, you, I apologize because you have to listen to the same things over and over again for the past several months at these meetings. But the, you know, the, the club rallied the troops tonight to come and address, uh, a series of talking points that they, they all hit on. And I think that, uh, you know, there, there's a few, uh, points that are valid. I, I don't necessarily oppose the, the development. But I think, uh, again, apologize, you've heard the same thing over and over, but I actually was looking at the minutes, so I'm going to actually state something that was said last time. Chairman Walsh, paraphrased, pointed out that the, looking at some of the other options would show that a willingness to work with the neighborhood and the community to mitigate some of the impacts of this project. And then the representative of the developer, Mr. Kimmer, said that Scheme seven and eight were, uh, provided at the board's request, but they're not feasible for this project. Mr. Kimmer stated that no matter what scheme gets selected, the residents of Ruffner Road will be unhappy, and therefore it would make sense to keep the, uh, keep the access there as to not, uh, upset multiple areas. That's not being a good neighbor. We've heard several times that he's a nice guy. Oh, he'll, you know, make it great. But he's, that's not being a good neighbor. And it, uh, we would not have any reason to believe going forward that they're going to be a good neighbor if that's the attitude of the representatives of the club. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else online would like to speak before we close Privilege of the Floor?
Laura? That's it.
I actually still see Ms. Kirkton with her hand raised, but it may just be because it's been, it's been, okay, no, I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I'm going to close Privilege of the Floor. We'll move on the agenda, and again, thank you very much, uh, for coming tonight or speaking virtually. Uh, next up, we have new business, and we have one resolution tonight, and that's Resolution 2023-08, a resolution for site plan approval for clearing and construction of recreation fields at the Trinity Baptist Church located at 2635 Balltown Road. I will summarize, uh, the important points of the resolution, which is posted to the website. Resolved that this planning board hereby determines that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment, and hereboard directs the town planner to file a negative declaration. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code in previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered in any way without first contact in the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25 foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Two, additionally, the town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25 foot boundary from the boundary of the wetland. A split rail fence must be installed at said boundary and along designated no clearing buffers prior to closeout of the building permit. Three, the limits of clearing on the site plan shall be strictly adhered to during construction. Four, in accordance with Chapter 180 of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the Superintendent of Water, Soil and Engineering and shall remain in place until, uh, until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Condition number five, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a preconstruction meeting with the town of Niskiuna and shall address any concerns raised by the town as well as finalize a tree planting plan that species in specific locations with the Niskiuna Tree Council. Six, as a condition of the site plan approval, all notes included on the site plan drawing must be followed, including those pertaining to tree preservation and the planting of a line of trees from Balltown Road along the property line with the adjacent southern neighbor. Ends number seven, per Niskiuna Town Code, Section 220-48E, final site plan approval shall expire two years after the date of this written final approval of the planning board unless construction in accordance with the approved plan has begun or an additional extension of time has been granted by the planning board. Mr. McPartlin, do I have a motion for, on the resolution?
Yes, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Okay, Mr. McPartlin, move for adoption. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Khan, and discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to make a friendly modification to the second whereas in the resolution, just to change the date of the most recent revision to January 27th of this year.
Well, it's a 20 versus 22, so change that to a 23?
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, I think we can do that without, uh, taking a roll call. All right, thank you. Any other comments from you or the board?
No, we have the negative recommendation for negative deck from the, uh, CAC.
Yeah, I see the applicant is here, so you've had an opportunity to take a look at the conditions, and I think things that we've talked about pretty much all along. So you're comfortable. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to note I'm recusing.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. All right. So we still have a five member, uh, four required for quorum. So Mr. Henry, did you please call the roll?
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
He's absent, excused.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Khan.
Hi.
Mr. McPartlin.
Hi.
Mr. Darpino.
Hi.
Mr. Drescher.
Hi.
Chairman Walsh.
Hi. Uh, the resolution is approved. Thank you very much for working on it. It's been a while, but glad to get it done. Good luck. All right, that's it for, uh, under new business. We'll move to, uh, discussion items for tonight. First up being, uh, 1851 Union Street slash 1254 Ruffner Road, the Mohawk Golf Club, applicant for sketch plan approval, including a special use permit for the average, 22 lot average density development. And on this one, I believe Mr. McPartlin, your recusal, uh?
That's correct.
Yeah, I just want, thank you. A note for that one, so thank you, Mr. McPartlin. Mr. Sweet?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. So glad to be back one more time. We left rather reflective after our last meeting. Typically don't like to see something get quite as energized as that particular meeting did. So I took the comments that I heard, understanding that it seems that the single most objectionable aspect of this project was the demolition of the home at 1245 Ruffner Road. So I did go back to Mr. Rutherford, and we, we did look at other options. And, you know, I've been pretty firm in my position about not wanting to disturb any of the golf course and change the historic nature of it since it has been dated back to 1922. But we did come to the conclusion, given the objections that we've been hearing, that taking advantage of that existing 60-foot right of way may be a better way to access the property. Being that it's already there, it's a matter of record. Uh, we are going to be disturbing a portion of the golf course, uh, reshaping potentially the 11th green. Uh, it will probably trigger an additional wetlands delineation, which we're willing to do. Also allows us then an opportunity to create the walking trail, which I think you saw in our submission as well. So we're hoping that this shows to the points that we discussed, the compromise that Mohawk Golf Club is willing to make in order to move the project forward. Listening to what the board members had to say and what we learned on our site visit, we're hoping that the alternative of using the existing 60-foot right of way is going to be appealing to the board. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kimmer, and he can outline the details from an engineering perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Kimmer from ABD Engineers. Bill kind of summarized, I think, most of, you know, what we presented in our latest submission. Um, as you, as you can see, we are now coming in off the existing paper street off Ruffner Road. Uh, we've got a slightly longer roundabout. You've still got the 22 lots, 12 townhome units, 10 single family units. The stormwater area is about the same. The overall dimensions of the, the overall outbounds of the parcel are pretty much the same as is the, uh, open space area. I know that we did get a list of concerns from the planning department prior to the meeting, and, uh, you know, I'd be happy to go through those. I, I don't think any of the concerns are new. You know, as Bill mentioned previously, we, we are open to, um, to performing a, uh, updated wetland delineation. Obviously, these wetlands right now are, you know, they're non-jurisdictional. Uh, we don't believe they would be jurisdictional. They're, they're isolated. They flow into a municipal system. But I'll start from the top, I guess. The number one item, as I received from Laura, was utilities. Um, we are still proposing to connect to the water on Ruffner Road, which as far as we know is okay with town engineering. Uh, we are also proposing to connect to, not to the sewer main that goes by Kelts Farm, but the, uh, larger main that goes along Ruffner Road and, uh, through the, the Rosendale School property, um, which as far as we know, is, is not under any kind of moratorium or it does not have capacity issues. The number two thing that I received from Laura was that the planning department was requesting a, um, an updated, uh, conventional layout to show that we could still achieve the 22 lots they're proposing with a, uh, a non-average density development layout. We did not submit that with the actual submission package, but I did email that to Laura um, this afternoon, just a, a sketch showing that we are still capable. Obviously, I don't think you guys have had a chance to review it.
No, we probably don't.
Number three was the wetlands. Uh, number four is that the, uh, a portion of the public road is not centered in the right of way. Um, you can see that by the 11th green, that road is pushed to within five feet of the edge of the right of way. But we don't believe this is an issue because there is only going to be one utility running along that length of road. It's going to be just a forest main. So from a maintenance standpoint, we don't see any issues with that. Uh, there is nothing in the code that says that the road needs to be in the middle of the right of way. Um, it does meet the, uh, radii requirements. And, uh, number five, which I think is kind of a, a pretty big deal, is that, uh, part of the code does say that there needs to be a certain percentage of open space in relation to the lot size reduction, and that's something that's been brought up at previous meetings. That's why we've submitted two separate plans, one showing what we want, would like to do, which is have a 50-foot buffer. You know, we would like to create, oh, as large a buffer as we can from the neighbors to preserve as much of the conservation area as possible. But this doesn't meet the percentage that's required in the code for the average density development. Um, so I think maybe we can talk about that tonight if you'd like, and obviously I'm here to answer any other questions you have.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear from either a legal or the planning office. Do we have the opportunity for a waiver? Or does it have to comply exactly with the average density development requirements?
For case law, there can be no waiver.
And, you know, we're, we can, you know, that will mean that basically we'll, we'll be reducing the buffer down to probably about 35 feet. I know in this particular thing that I've submitted, the buffer is 30 feet, but that was just kind of quick math to easily achieve the percentage. I think we can make it a little bit bigger, but probably not much.
Is there any other option to modifying the site, uh, plan in order to leave the 50, but it, you know, basically play with the numbers to make it work?
Not really. Yeah, I mean, the, the only way would be to increase the overall size of the parcel and the, the outer bounds of the parcel are pretty much right at the edge of the golf course.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, like, I didn't know if you had looked at over here, like over along that, like even if you just bump that out by five or 10 feet, that may pick up a decent amount of area right along that line.
It's possible, we can.
And, and maybe even just a, like, a little corner over here. I mean, I think you could pick up a decent amount of square footage, just increasing the boundaries a little bit.
And Laura, to your suggestion, I think there might be opportunities as we move to that shared retention pond that we built in conjunction with the town. There might be an opportunity for us to add some additional, uh, footage along that, that linear line, and then also maybe expand toward the retention area a little bit, too. But we'll do our best. It was our intention, obviously, as you know, to maintain 50 feet. And we were hoping, but council has done the research and, and there is no way for us to be able to maintain that. That was something that we really wanted to offer to the neighborhood. So we'll do our best to, um, try to meet that percentage and get back to 50 feet, which would mean then expanding that probably a little bit to the north. But we're willing to look at that.
Yeah, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate, you know, the additional 20 feet or, you know.
Well, obviously.
15 feet, whatever it is.
We put a value on that, too, as a way to, to buffer. And, uh, so we'll do our best to try to get back to 50.
Okay. You have anything from the project leads right now? Any questions for the applicant? We'll start with you guys. Mr. Connor, Dear Pino?
So, Mr. Darpino, and he took the lead on this, and I, um, looked at it also. So first of all, we can have a discussion around this plan based on the usage of a road as not demolishing the building. So thank you for, uh, choosing one out of the 12 that you would, uh, propose the last time. So I think we need to turn to some more technical issues also. And so, Dave, I don't know if you want to take the lead with what you put together, and then we can have the discussion.
So between meetings, what I did was I went through the comprehensive plan, and I marked out all of the areas where the Mohawk Golf Club was referenced. Also, what the development, the proposed development, how I thought it may affect the plan. And I just want to quickly recap those, and I will try to do that within, within five minutes. Um, in the issue area neighborhoods, um, specifically what we talk about are townwide issues and how we came up with defining neighborhoods. There's geographic features, physical manmade landscape, roads, uh, neighborhood character, all of those things go into how we, how we establish that. One of which is number five neighborhood is named Country Club after the Mohawk Golf Club. Again, these are on pages, uh, just for the record, page 12, page 14. One of the other things is on page 43, Comprehensive Planning Committee has identified several undeveloped land parcels within which the committee feels due to their size and location have high open space or recreational value and may warrant future protection. These parcels include, but are not limited to, the Mohawk Golf Club indicated there. The
The page 79, Under Residential Development. This talks about as town reaches the full build-out and significant consideration for redevelopment established. These two paragraphs in here specifically talk about if a single house comes down in a neighborhood in something larger combining two lots, it does not talk about specifically a single-family home being taken down for access. But pages 79 and 80 refer to that development pattern. Page 98, Under the Issue Development of Existing Large Parcels, the Mohawk Golf Club has a quick summary. Basically that it's a 27-hole golf course, recreation facilities, tennis, swimming, large clubhouse, dining facilities, and other functions. Talks about it being Zoned R1, which allows residential development. Under the town's current regulations, a large number of homes could be constructed if the club ever ceased to operate under its current configuration. Given that this parcel attributes to open space, if the club ever became available, the town may consider operating as a municipal golf course or relocating recreational facilities to the location. Page 116, Under Implementation Tasks, specifically calls out for encourage the use of average density development options to continue to encourage its use to maintain diversity of housing types within communities. And then finally on page... On page 120, Redevelopment Concerns. As the town approaches near full build-out and development pressures increase, Niskiuna will be faced with situations where developers and residents may select areas for redevelopment. As the capital district undergoes continual expansion with new enterprises locating here, land values may become increasingly more valuable where the land that the existing building sits on is more valuable than the structure. Established neighborhoods can become attractive based on their proximity to the business, natural resources, and amenities. The development should be carefully managed with the appropriate mechanisms that promote community growth to protect cultural assets. And then it just has a quick summary about other metropolitan areas. So basically what the intent is here is that, you know, the Mohawk Golf Club has been, you know, on the town's radar, not just from a planning perspective, but from comprehensive planning and other avenues of the board for several decades. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, not only for the board members, but for, you know, the public that comes here, you know, to look at the entire plan in its entirety to see how we're going to be dissecting this, you know, and analyzing this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just to shed some light on that period of time when the club was facing an imminent foreclosure by M&amp;T Bank. And they actually mandated that we put this piece of property on the weak course on the market as a way for them to, in essence, accelerate a liquidation, if there was to be one. That's when Mike stepped up because we knew full well that M&amp;T had been approached by a number of large home builders in the area because they knew it was in the comp plan and it was Zoned R1 and that it's 190 acres with full utility service in the heart of Niskiuna. So that was part of what pushed Mike to say, I've got to maintain this as a legacy. I've got to own this golf course. So he went to M&amp;T and bought the paper, the mortgages, so that they couldn't foreclose. So that's the litany, understanding what the comp plan said. There could be a developer in front of you tonight that bought the mortgages from M&amp;T and the golf course wouldn't be there and you'd be looking at a 300-home subdivision.
The point's well taken in the scenario that you said, Mr. Sweet. But there is a clear inference from the text of the comprehensive plan that the intent of the plan, the town, is to actually keep this area recreational, right? In fact, I think in one...
I think it stated in the event that it was available for sale.
Right, so that's a hypothetical.
That the town might consider keeping it a golf course, which I wouldn't recommend. Most municipalities aren't happy with their golf course.
Right, or elsewhere, and it also states that, you know, create it as a land conservation, right? This was done elsewhere. So the key thing is that between the, excuse me, between the usage of the ADD, the understanding of how the entire property is zoned today, and what I would see as an intent by the comprehensive plan is keeping this area recreational. And I'll add to that a fourth thing, which I'm not going to read it again, but it's there, right? The concept of the character of the neighborhood that this special use permit is going to entail, right? I think relative to the board and our discussion, at least this is something I think that we can begin having technical discussions around in terms of the factors that Laura laid out. And we'll proceed with, if this is the plan that you want to go with to the public hearing, right? We were going to take the other one last time, so I'm okay with us calling for the public hearing on this one. But I think we really need to focus in on some of the technical issues that fundamentally will affect this criteria in the special use permit about what it does to the... All right, I said I wasn't going to read it, but I'll read it, right? So this is 220-60, Special Use Standards for Granting Special Use Permits, right? That one of the considerations taken is as to the street capacity and use that in the opinion of the board, may be necessary to safeguard public health and convenience and as may be required for the preservation of the general character of a neighborhood in which such use, buildings, or structures is to be placed, et cetera. But I think we need to work through our technical discussion relative to what that criteria, about the satisfaction of that criteria.
And if I might, Mr. Connor? Again, just for the record, we're willing to have Laura solicit proposals to bring the TDE on because during this period of time that we've been coming to present, we've continued to develop the engineering. So we're at a point where we could be sitting with the TDE and talking hard engineering facts about water, sewer, traffic, utilities, stormwater. And that would be great if we could call for public hearing, move this forward, solicit proposals for a TDE. We're willing to start to incur those costs if, in fact, you can get one on board sooner rather than later. And I think that'll help us all better understand how this can proceed forward.
Right, I mean, that's a better place than where I think you were last time, so I'm glad to hear that you're willing to...
We're fine with that.
And Laura, did we find someone?
We have about five TDEs. I think that Clark and I narrowed it down to three that we would send the proposal out to and just get quotes on. We haven't gotten the quotes yet.
Okay.
Laura, just for full transparency, are you able to share that list? Because I don't want to be in a situation where I may have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, it is actually public. The town board adopts it. I think it adopted in February this year, but I can just email it to you.
Yeah, just as Mr. Diopino said to recuse himself, if I'm working with that same engineer on another project, I wouldn't want that to be an issue.
Now, just one question I have, clarification for the public regarding privilege of the floor. The existing right-of-way that, with this proposal scheme, whatever you want to option, it does show on the comp plan as a dotted line as a potential access to the site. I don't, I want to make sure the public knew that. So that's where that came from. And it showed on the town map, the town comprehensive plan, the last one. One of the neighbors, I can't remember if it was 1191 or 1291.
1191.
1191 was concerned that they would have two front yards as a result of this, but in reality, I believe they already have two front yards because it's a paper street. So that does not, I just wanted to make that known, so.
And thank you, Chairman. I was actually going to, that was the next item I wanted to talk about, was with this proposal, with the connectivity and coming in, there's always a concern that if a development comes in and it's adjacent to the edge of a neighborhood, that to me, I always like to see two connection streets. I mean, a cul-de-sac, I think, is sort of a last resort. I know that the land configuration here is really, really tight. I think we've heard from a lot of board members, taking down a residence to make a secondary thing is not a really preferable option, at least not in some of the members' opinions. But again, if it means that, you know, ultimately this comes in and there's only one connection point, you know, we're down to a cul-de-sac. And as it moves through the different boards, and if it does come to fruition, you know, again, you know, take a look at the neighborhood, look at the character, the architecture that's there, you know, we promote diversity in new neighborhoods. That's really solid in the comp plan. So if it does get down to that point, I just am hopeful that, you know, whatever does get here can contribute to the neighborhood, not be a standalone entity that is just completely segregated. Those are not the types of communities that we want to see here in Niskiuna.
Well, and not to develop the concept this evening, but we will be maintaining that access route through the 60-foot, well, I don't believe it's 60 feet, but the easement that currently exists. And there certainly might be an opportunity to create a walking trail there as well as an emergency access for fire. So, and we also, you know, we'll look at other options. I understand the concept. We certainly, we figured it out with Country Clubs, so.
Is that going to cause us a problem? I know what the, our code states 500 feet. And I think if you come in from the emergency, even going that way, you'd probably end up over 500 feet, right? Sure looks at. So I just wonder, is that going to cause this board not to be able to approve anything if it's in violation or do we have waiver capability?
As far as I know, there's no actual set length for the cul-de-sacs in Niskiuna's code.
Yeah, I thought we had this discussion the first night.
We go around with this and trying to find where it actually says it.
I don't think there is.
It does, it does say, I can pull up the code, but I'll have to review it more closely because I think if it's in our subdivision code that we want to look at alternative accesses if it's 500 feet. But I don't know that the alternative access has to be under 500 feet. I'll have to check.
Yep, it's putting in the, so Laura, from what I'm understanding from you, if we're going to have it as an alternative access currently as it's proposed, that's what you have to check, right? I think if it was the main access before.
Then I think it triggers the main access is if the main access is...
Greater than 500.
Greater than 500 feet, but I don't know what it says about the, I don't actually think it states a number for the emergency.
Yeah, but in the spirit of what Mr. Walsh was saying, one of your proposals back when you had the entrance tearing down the building, you were going off through our road, right? You could have actually made an emergency access that way. Is that still a possibility?
It's really not necessary.
Right, it depends, though, on what this regulation's going to be in terms of the distance, right?
What I was going to suggest, could we make that number one item on the TDE's list?
The emergency access?
Yeah, and complying with what the code loosely suggests, I guess, at this point, since no one can seem to point to a section or a chapter, so.
It's one of those ones we have conversation on every time this comes up because I think we talked about what does everybody else do? You guys know better than I do, but I think Clifton Park and Half Moon, they limit the number of homes on a cul-de-sac greater than whatever, 700, 500 or 750 feet.
Yeah, and we did research through the state building office and 750.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a gray area, but you know, if you go over to Clifton Park, there's some developments off of Vicious Ferry or Mo Road over in that area where, you know, they limit it how many on each cul-de-sac, and I think it's on the order of eight to 10 homes each, you know? But it's, again, it's greater than the 500 feet. It's probably greater than the 750 feet in some cases from the main road, you know? So that's a tough one. I just don't want to see, you know, as we work forward, if that becomes a high-level concern and then things change as a result, especially with a public hearing coming up, you know? So we'll have to take a look at that and get some support out of TDE on that also.
Yeah, I put that in the same bucket, I guess, with water, sewer, utility, stormwater. I mean, those are all engineered solutions. I mean, there is a solution. It's just a question of where it ends up happening.
On page five of the, of at least what the planning board has, I think there's an older traffic study for a differing configuration. Do you have a current one for this as proposed?
So this, the traffic numbers coming out of this exit would be identical.
So you're claiming that it's going to be identical. That's what I wanted to at least put on the record.
Absolutely.
And side note also, Laura, I know you go to other committee meetings. We've been hearing a lot from the neighborhood about concerns with speed and warning stop signs and traffic. I'm assuming that you've shared that at the public safety committee meeting and everything?
Well, I haven't specifically attended a public safety meeting to share it. I have shared it with complete truth, so. You've shared it?
Yes.
Yeah, and thank you for doing that. I have driven over there and sat over there and driven by and I greet the neighbors. The day, one day I went over there, I saw two stop signs get run when I was in the area and one of them, no brake lights come on at all, I was right behind them, just right through it, so. And unfortunately, a lot of these people that are doing it are our neighbors, you know? That's the thing. It's not, you know, somebody from Loudenville coming by. It's our neighbors cutting through. It's our own people. So when you're out there driving, you know, think about it, when you're in a different neighborhood, you know, how you want people to behave in your neighborhood. We should all be reciprocal, you know? Anyway.
So going back to one of the fundamental things at least, what's our plan relative to the open space and the setback here? We want to maximize the buffer. So are you going to look at the north side of the property for potential?
Yeah, I think I previously committed to that. It will look, we'd like to maintain 50 feet for the neighborhood. So we will look at adding to that linear line that I guess would be to the north. Dave, where's your compass? Yeah, well, it's actually a little bit to the west, but that line right there. And then potentially we could move a little bit to the north as we move towards the retention area. There might be areas there that we could, we could put into the conservation area.
The subdivision code is Section 189-17J1. Where cul-de-sacs are designed to be permanent, they should not, in general, not exceed 500 feet in length until terminated in a circular turnaround, having a minimum right-of-way of radius of 60 feet.
In general, what section is that, Laura?
It's 189-17J1.
Okay, thank you.
It took me a long time to find it, but now I know where it is.
Now we know. That's why I wrote it down. 189-17J1, okay. All right, what else we got to talk about for this for tonight?
Back on the January 23rd meeting, I'm just looking at our notes, there you were requested that you would provide a long-term strategic plan. And I believe that was brought up last time. I didn't know if that was something that...
I think we verbalized that, that it was going to remain the par-three golf course, the 18-hole golf course, the tennis courts, the clubhouse, the pool, cabana area. And there was one area that identified adjacent to our fifth hole and sixth hole that we potentially could deem for forever wild as long as we had potential future use. If there needed to be an expansion of a golf hole, there's something that would be, you know, subject to golf course development, but it wouldn't be subject to any other type of development.
Okay. So Laura or Elena, with this development going on, does that give us an opportunity here to do something with future either deed restriction or zoning? We brought up deed restriction before, but even something, in the spirit of actually the comp plan, right? Does that, does that open an opportunity for us to look comprehensively at the entire golf course?
I mean...
To...
Can we oppose other regulations or stipulations as part of this?
To forego future development.
To protect open space.
I think you can have the discussion, but I don't think you can mandate it. But that, I don't know if that answers the question.
I think it mostly answers it, yeah. So we would not be able to, so let's take it one at a time. So deed restriction, no?
On the entire parcel?
Yeah, the remainder of the parcel.
Not unless the applicant was willing to do that.
That'd be tantamount to a taking.
Yes.
That'd be condemnation.
How?
It would be, it's a taking, so it would be eminent domain. If you place a deed restriction, that it could never be developed other than open space.
No, but you're always going to own it and keep it as a golf course, right?
Well, that's, you're restricting the potential use. That's tantamount to a taking. That would be eminent domain.
I do agree it would be a taking to do that without the applicant's agreement to do that. It's zoned how it's zoned currently, so we have to work within those confines.
And I will make a couple comments. One of the concerns over several decades now has been that the golf club would cease to exist and they could logically come in to develop the whole area as single-family homes. And I don't think the town would have much cause to say no. I've had lengthy discussions over the years with two of our former planners, Diane Sturman and Kathy Maturn. I've had lengthy discussions over the years with two of our former planners, Diane Sturman and Kathy Matern, and with some of our attorneys, and we've all had concerns along that. It's been a discussion at previous comprehensive plan committees. Added to that, I was discussing this with a family member who lives in Pennsylvania. And at first she was very, very upset. Why was I even considering this? And I told her about the ADD. And she said that sounded way better than what they got. They've had not one but two nearby golf courses go under. One is now a full-blown housing development and the other is a hospital with its parking lot, et cetera. And there's no sign that either property had been a golf course. So we've looked to try to preserve it, help the whoever the owner is to help the club maintain itself. But we are limited in what we can restrict it to. And in my mind, taking a small parcel off for the subdivision, okay, there's a little cash inflow, but there's also reduced overhead. Making it the ADD leaves way more green space than you would get with a full-blown single-family development or even just that parcel being the regular single-family. And that's kind of how I've been looking at this and analyzing it all along. That the club is doing good now is wonderful, but I I don't think we can necessarily count on that. But the zoning is what it is and trying to limit its future options to less than it has now would be very problematic.
Yeah.
Okay. I might be stepping outside my lane a little bit here, but perhaps the conversation with the applicant could be instead of a deed restriction, would the applicant be willing to consider a right of first refusal to the town that should the applicant wish to sell the property that the town would have the ability to potentially purchase it to maintain it as certain facilities, whatever they may be? I don't know if that's something, you know, I'm kind of like I said, stepping outside my lane a little bit, but it's just an idea.
I'd be happy to take that back to Mr. Rutherford because that's that's a reasonable request. I don't know if it fits with his business goals and philosophies, but certainly I'll take that back.
Yeah, there's there's language in the in the plan that alludes to that, that if it ever did come up for sale, that the town should take a hard look at it.
I think that might have been the structure that Western Turnpike and the town of Giddleland actually had. Because the town now owns Western Turnpike, and I think those were the conditions that were predetermined there too. So certainly we'll take that back to Mike.
So thanks, Elena, for bringing that up. It was actually on my list of things to bring up, maybe not necessarily now, but later.
To kind of go online with the discussion, I heard Mr. Diarpino had said about the comprehensive plan, so.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Connor, Mr. Diarpino?
Um, I think we just need to, we'd like to as carefully as possible look over the engineering, right? Going back to the criteria, right? We, what I'm envisioning is that, you know, and maybe the entire board can take a look at this section and we should really be able to comment on each one of these
Yep, two twenty or sixty.
Criteria, two twenty dash sixty.
Okay.
Right, and.
And and for the record, I'm in favor. If you want to move forward and lockstep with assigning a TDE at this point, I I think there's
Yeah, I think.
Significant value to that.
Yep.
Depending on what information can arise in the next month or so.
Yep, it's not like we're ready. The applicant's willing, and Laura will share the list to make sure there's no conflict of interest as stated, so we'll get started there. I think the thing we got to do now is just decide, you know, formally call for the public hearing at the next meeting, like we did last time. There's no other business. We can discuss that. So it would be a public hearing on what's known as scheme two, this exit at the current Paper Street onto Roughness Road. The plan that pretty much exists, assuming we'll try to get the fifty-foot right away or fifty-foot buffer there by modifying slight boundaries to the west. So can I just call for maybe a show of hands, all those in favor of a public hearing at our next meeting, which is March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three? Please do a show of hands, all those in favor.
Hi.
I see Ms. Gold, I guess Ms. Gold has your hand up there, right?
Yes, I do.
I didn't look down this way. Is that unanimous, everybody?
Yep. Yes.
Oh, that's right, you're accused. I'm sorry. Thanks. Okay.
Thanks unanimously for all the voters.
So we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
Um, Bill, I just, I, it's in the agenda statement, but I just wanted to bring it up, and maybe we've discussed it before, but the tree council was just trying to preserve as many trees as possible, which is their job. And they were wondering if you could save some tree clearing by moving the stormwater ponds as like onto a, as a water hazard? Like if you could incorporate them into the golf course, so you wouldn't have to clear as many trees?
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
I think one of the things I'd like to do, and and we talked about it previously, was set up an actual site visit with the
Tree Council, yes.
So we can start to flag. I know there are a number of nice hardwood deciduous trees.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of scrub and pine and trees that have fallen over the years because it's never been maintained. It's just been left forever wild. So maybe if we could, obviously, it's going to be a few weeks from now if the storm actually comes together, but maybe we could even start to tag the ones that they think are most valuable, and then we can take a look at alternative designs to maybe preserve those.
Yeah, and they were wondering, like, because I noticed on your plan, like, you're piping the stormwater. It looked like you're piping this one. Like, is it possible to have a smaller stormwater retention pond, pipe it, and then make it bigger somewhere else on the golf course? So that you could save more trees?
Yeah.
Because I definitely think we've seen a lot of demonstrations that there's a lot of good wildlife, so the less trees that we could take down.
Not to get into the minutia, but counselor, you may want to weigh in on this one. If I move the stormwater retention off of the subject parcel, is that going to comply with DEC and town requirements if my stormwater isn't on the subject parcel?
I'm kind of inclined to say no, but I'd like to double-check that before I say for sure.
For the record, we're willing to take a look at it if it doesn't get in any of us in any trouble with DEC.
Because I think every tree that we can save is important, just even conceptual level.
Okay.
Okay, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, and we'll see you at the public hearing. Yeah, thank you. All right. TDC approval. We'll give everybody a moment to to step aside here, and then next up would be twenty-nine zero nine Knot Street, the Broken Inn.
And I'm going to note, I did not get to see the latest rendering. It will not unload on my computer, won't download.
Okay, I'll bring it up here.
I don't know if I tried to open it too soon and jinxed it or what, but it just will not open.
Mr. Nicky, how are you?
Good. How are you?
It would have been better if Penn State won their basketball game.
We're in.
Yeah.
We're in. You're welcome to come.
Oh, did they? I didn't get a chance to check.
We're in the tournament.
All right.
Yeah, Thursday, nine fifty-five PM game, because they don't want me to sleep, but we're in. I'm Thomas Nicky from the Broken Inn, twenty-two oh nine Knot Street, Niskiuna. Thank you for letting me speak and discuss the plan tonight. We have modified it per all of your suggestions, per legal, per town code, per suggestion of town planner's office. When last we met, we were asked to provide some additional drawings or some modified drawings. We did that the very next day. We got a list of eight items from the town planner's office that need be addressed. We have done those and submitted them. You may not have gotten them with a whole lot of time to review. We just learned on Friday we'd be presenting today. So what was submitted earlier today is for six picnic tables, all on the landlord's property, all spaced appropriately. Or I should say appropriately, thirty-six inches apart with pathways in between each of those and handicap accessible that do not extend onto anyone else's property nor on the sidewalk to be placed, which you'll see numbered one through six on the right there. On the left, it's a little faint, you'll see two what look like bicycle icons. Those are bicycle rack that people will be able to park their bicycles. I provided drawings of the racks themselves. They're double-sided. They will accommodate up to ten bicycles each. We have, I don't know what else really I'm supposed to educate you on in terms of changes since the last time, except to say that we are to code. We have, with the exception of Gail King, full community support. We are on the landlord's property with support and writing from the landlord, both of them, and we are ready.
Okay. Yeah, we got that late, so I didn't have time myself.
Sure, I'm happy to talk you through it. What you're seeing here, obviously, is the aerial drawing. We were asked to label one aerial and one site plan.
Yeah.
Uh, there are six tables. They're traditional picnic-style tables, six feet long by fifty-seven inches wide. What you're seeing, those octagons, the umbrella that goes into the table. I also provided layout of the
Sorry, I'm just going to make it bigger.
Property.
There we go.
Sure.
Okay. The which, the which one?
We haven't changed anything in terms of the parking layout from the previous versions. We haven't turned, which is a net increase of four parking spaces. We haven't changed anything in terms of the planner barricades, which comply with everything that was provided to us or that we've reviewed relative to their use to stop traffic. We are putting cement parking barriers, if you will, or curbs in front of every parking space. We are striping it. We're doing everything on our own.
Okay. So Laura, I think, yeah, I think Laura's got some new information the board might not be privy to, or maybe not you, so brief us on what you know, please.
Yeah, so we, we got this plan and we were going through it. Again, I want to iterate, you can open up the ice cream window at any time. You do meet the requirements. We said that at the last meeting. No problem if you wanted to open it up tomorrow. The tables can be taken through, because they're on private property, can be taken through the planning board as the as a modification to the special use, well, it's as a modification to the special use permit, but it doesn't change the use. So you guys can consider that with site plan. You can choose to call for a public hearing or choose to just move forward with it. The town heard a lot of concern from the neighbors about the safety of the intersection at Cliff, uh, Clifton Park and Crescent Road, which we, the Conservation Board, your council was looking at this too. This plan, I think, makes it a little better. It's trying to make it better, but I think the town wants to really do redo that intersection. So I don't think that there's really any opposition to this, but because the town is really wanting to get the Clifton Park Crescent intersection, like, changed and safer. I think they'd like to focus on the tables and the ice cream window being fine and then still reserve on the striping because the town.
I I couldn't disagree in terms of safety or capacity further, especially since the striping portion of it can be removed and redone at almost any time. And given the length of time that the town has looked at this intersection and wanting to do something more, we're essentially saying we're not going to stripe in perpetuity. It's been a decade.
I think it's closer than it ever has been, but where that's coming from is that the town doesn't want you to spend money if it's if it's not, if it's going to be changed, like, relatively soon into the future.
Do you have any reason to think that's going to happen in the next several months?
I mean, that we've been working really hard and we've been trying to get meetings with Metroplex and we've been having designs going, so yeah, I do think that that is something the town's trying really hard to do.
So we're talking about putting people outside but not striping the parking that leads up to them? And that's what the town wants?
Well, you still have to maintain the barriers, but they're saying don't stripe yet.
I think that's foolish. I just, it's paint. It's my expense. I have no problem. I'm concerned about my expense. What I'm telling you is right now, we're talking about increasing the capacity to stripe in terms of parking spaces. If you don't stripe, you don't do that, number one. You're going to go from what's fifteen spaces here to what ends up being ten on any given day and probably less than that right now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remind, I don't mind revisiting the conversation with the town. I think a lot of it was, we're trying to save headache, we're trying to all work together. Why would you put all that effort into it if it's if it's only going to last for like a month or two? If you're really willing to say, you know, I get it, like, I could put all of this work into it and you guys could change it in a month, I can bring that back to the town.
I think so. I, it's hard for me to get an email back in a month, let alone to think that they're going to stripe this parking lot.
Are we, are we trying to avoid some kind of a liability issue here with this or if the owner? All right, it's.
I guess, I guess, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm just not following the question.
I don't think it's a liability issue. I think it's because the town is really exploring other options that'll re that'll realign this intersection and the parking would be slightly different. And if that's true, I think they didn't want the parking spaces to be put down for the time being because they would change.
Can can I ask, Laura, we saw, I think it's part of the packet or maybe something that was sent subsequently, a zoomed-out view of a reconfiguration of the intersection? Who drew that?
Um.
The one that was in our packet?
No, I, I think you, I think we got a separate email late.
Today, today. Well, there was some.
There was a drawing that was included, and I only included it for the purpose of showing where the property line of the landlord is. And that had been recognized by the town previously because it was a drawing that was supplied to the town.
Oh, right. And there was other past drawings from Concepts for the High Street and this, I think MJ, MJ, you know, maybe making this a T-intersection and different variables, but that was
Correct.
I think, I don't know if it was part of this, it was before this, but it was, I think it was part of just looking at the whole Knot Street, that whole area.
I only have these three. Did I miss one?
So I guess.
It would have been in the larger packet that I scanned with Senator Clark earlier today. It would have been the last page.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Clark forwarded it.
Correct, yes.
Oh, wait, so that's probably right here.
So I guess my position on this is that I like the idea of striping now for a few reasons. One of which is that you wouldn't have any essential creep with the barriers if they moved in or out, or if people did move them, we would know where where they would go. The second thing is, is that if you do stripe, it it does, it does demarcate the the lines better. Correct, there's, I think that's the drawing you're referring to.
It is, yeah.
The the other reason is that if you have the lines that are now, that asphalt probably very likely will be replaced with any capital project just because of the condition it's in. So the striping, the few hundred dollars that you would be spending on that now, I think would be, would would go away. And if the ghost line is part of that striping, I would support it because it is a wide breadth lane that comes in where those two streets meet. And I think a little bit more delineation there, especially at night, would be helpful.
I I agree. I want to second what you've said, Mr. Diarpino.
Well, yeah, I I don't see any, I actually see a benefit to just as fast as Mr. Nicky can get the stripe done, to get the stripe done.
Safety regardless of how long it's for.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're aware that whatever cost you'll put into that is.
It is not at all lost, I mean, there are discussions going on with Metroplex and that the town is looking to that becomes, I hope, again, as I said before, is that I put in that discussion. We've heard nothing about that since we were last here.
All right. So that said, so how far can we go? I know you want, you're, obviously want to open, you want to open it in a safe way. Looks like.
We've had the public hearing already. I know there was a mention of that, obviously.
Well, I think we're past that. I mean.
Yeah, we did have a public hearing.
Yeah, we're past that.
Mentioned it because I heard that.
Yeah, you know, I'm talking about this is the plan now and how far we can go in order to get a resolution so that we can all agree and we can at least put, I don't want to say temporary, but it sounds like it would be temporary if there's any further action from Metroplex or the town or whoever, county. So six tables within the property owned by the Langs, sounds reasonable, as long as they can fit them in there. He said whoever laid it all out, it looks like it'll work.
Correct.
And people can get around the tables. You updated the the paperwork that basically says, hey, there's not going to be any table service. These are just community tables, whether you get an ice cream or a sandwich from the co-op or available for everybody, and you're you're going to supply those tables, which is a great thing. And the only other items that we talked about was, you know, striping to help delineate. And actually, I agree with David also, because at least it'll help define where the barriers go and where they need to be, even if it is, you know, temporary striping, because it may go away in two months, whatever, right? And then the other open item we had, I believe, was from the county, Laura, you were going to talk about, I guess, modifying that curb or whatever. Obviously, I don't know if that meeting was, the meeting with, that you had included that discussion or not, or.
I lost the highway department before I was able to bring that up, but I will keep trying.
Okay. All right, so.
We should stripe until that, again.
Yeah, that's a, that's a problem, right, for the striping?
Correct.
Yeah, because you're going to cut off those spots that are.
That that's understood.
Yeah, so we got to come through that, right? But we could, we could come through that and get the picnic tables. But we could, we could come through that and get the picnic tables on private property. Uh, I think we can get there at least, uh, and it'll be a stopgap, whatever you want to call it, until, uh, come through it with, uh, with the Metroplex or county.
When was the last dialogue with Metroplex about something to do in this space?
I mean, we've, we have ongoing conversations with them.
Why can I not be involved in these conversations? We asked two months ago, we asked two weeks ago, there's ongoing discussions. Why are we not being included?
So it's partly because the town has to work out amongst itself what it can even be okay with. Like, the town has to work through liability, they have to work through right-of-way, what the highway needs, what the engineering department needs. Um, and then I think once, and this is true of really any project, once the town has a concerted idea of where it stands,
Right.
then it'll start reaching out to the stakeholders. But within the own, within its own self, like, it has, there's a lot of different pieces in the town that have to come together
Right.
before, um, it can really reach out and start inviting the other stakeholders.
But you've already been speaking to Metroplex while the process is going on.
Because we're still working through, I mean, partly, one of the things I was sharing with them was this plan, like, can, can we, can we work on this plan? Does it, does it work with what you guys are thinking? It's just a lot of internal coordination that we have to do, um, before we're, before we reach out to outside parties.
All right, so what can we do to at least, uh, get some kind of a sequential thing here, like the tables in place? Uh, maybe not the striping until you come through, uh, discussions with either highway or the county, um, so we can keep it moving forward.
We really just need to make that a priority. I don't, why can we not ask the county if we can remove a six-foot section of curb? Why is that not just a phone call that can't happen and get accomplished within a two-week period, including highway or whoever it is? Why has it taken two weeks for us to remove a six-foot by six-inch piece of concrete so that we can just complete this project already?
So we have a heavy workload and each applicant that's before us kind of has, you know, hot button issues that we're working on. I don't mind trying before the next meeting, trying again. Um, I've tried a couple of times on the curb, but
So I guess what I'm saying is, there are a way that we can phase this so that we can keep it moving for, so, for instance, could we have a resolution that says, okay, put the tables in place and have the condition that we come through the county thing and the striping, you know, so they can see at least some temporary closure? Uh, you know, where the, the planners are gonna go, that the planners are gonna still be boxed in so they look appealing. I know you have concerns about the wear.
I'm looking forward to it as soon as we stripe. We're gonna do it all at the same time.
All right, so
To, to, to duct tape and spit this thing at this point, after this long period of time, also is insensible.
All right, that's why I'm trying to see if there's something we can do to, to keep it moving in a positive direction.
And I think once we have this conversation with the county, we're there.
Okay. When's the, uh, when you plan on opening the ice cream window? Do you have a date that you're
March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth.
Which is before the next meeting. Originally, we weren't on the agenda tonight. And we asked to be put on the agenda, we weren't gonna be able to even speak about this for another two weeks, which by that time will have already been open.
Can they, can the tables go in without a site plan approval, Laura?
No, but he can open the window.
Yeah, no, the concern, the concern though is the, uh, the safety with or without the tables, right? With the having the barriers in place, would they be in place like they were before, previously, is what you're saying?
Yeah. He's already gone out there right now. He's gone out there right now.
They've been moved around, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if they have water in them, so there's more than just being there, being there, uh, to meet the intent of what they're there for also, right? At the locations that they should be at.
Ms. Gold has a question.
Okay.
Actually, a couple. Are these the same tables as shown before? And what's the diameter?
It's on the drawing, but everything that we sent today is to supersede anything that was attached to the previous, uh, document. And it shows there that they're fifty-nine inches long, they're rectangular, not round. Fifty inches, excuse me, seventy-two inches long, I believe, by fifty-seven wide. I have the drawing here and we attached it and the information that was sent.
Yeah, seventy-two by fifty-seven by twenty-nine.
Correct, thank you. I knew there was a fifty-seven in there somewhere.
So they're designed to seat, what, six people?
At capacity, six.
Couple of behind, eight people?
No.
They look large to me, and I, I'm worried about, because you're talking about people maybe with stroll, with strollers or other wheeled devices, and I, I'm worried that it's going to make it not enough room between tables.
Well, don't, don't worry, we have thirty-six inches between tables. And it's very rare you're gonna find six picnic tables at capacity, each with six people. Because if there's already two people sitting at a table, others will stand.
I think they're very large, the space.
At a capacity of six.
But I'm okay with the temporary striping at your risk.
Thank you so much. If we can find six people, each twenty-four inches wide to sit on the table, that'll get us capacity. We won't hit eight people unless we find eighteen-inch wide people.
All right. So you're gonna open before our next meeting, you'll have the safety barriers in place. Um, and then we need, we need to close with the county so that we can have a, a resolution that allows the striping, knowing that's gonna be temporary, and the barriers with the planners put in place so they look good, right? Uh, is that something we can get done before the next, the meeting on the twenty-seventh? I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, Laura, but
I mean, I'm okay with you guys calling for it, and if I can get it all wrapped up, we will. The, there's only one meeting in April, so there's a lot of incentive, I think, to wrap it up.
Yeah. You okay with that, Mr. D'Arpano? You have any concerns or?
No, I'm fine with that.
Yep. So, so, so one still question, on the current curb that's there, where there are parking spots, right, that the county had put in, what's, what's our plan for that?
Is, uh, reduce or take care of the curb and restripe it, change the orientation of the parking spots?
Yeah.
Yeah, but who's, who's responsible for that curb in this?
Well, it's on town, town property, right?
It might actually be in the county right-of-way, or maybe even both. It kind of sticks out right here, and here's the highway boundary line. I don't know.
No.
Probably a shared.
So we need county approval?
We definitely would, yeah, I mean, they just put it in.
Right, so that's the key point you, what Chairman Wass was referring to, that's the key point you need to discuss with the county, right? It's not really, Mr. Nisi, striping for some duration of time, the rest of it.
Yeah.
It's just relative to the curb.
I was coordinating with the highway department, the town highway department, but I do need to reach out to the county highway department as well.
Laura, respectfully, I question where a six-foot-long, six-inch-high curb ranks on the order of priority for the highway department or the county. And I know sometimes site plan is referred to county approval, and we know it just comes back with some very boilerplate
Common.
defer to local consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why can't we just, as a part of our site plan approval, call out specifically the removal of this curb and refer it to county consideration?
Well, partly because I don't think this plan works if for some reason the county says no.
To the removal of a six-foot-long curb?
Yeah, because you wouldn't be able to pull those cars into that spot.
But why can't we, why can't we ask them whether or not they're okay with it by referring the site plan to them?
Yeah, I mean, on, yeah, you could do it that way, you could do it that way. They have a month, though, to respond to, um, county referrals typically.
Well, that would push you out to April. It's one, it's one way to put it on their radar.
There are half a dozen ways to get this thing done.
Sounds like, it sounds like right now it doesn't get their attention. It, Laura's tried.
I believe Laura talked to the town
The highway, I've been working on the town highway, I have to work out.
The county, the county needs to be on board as well.
Nope, just the town highway I was working on.
Right, so, so
So I might
A month, a month for county should also allow enough time for town highway.
Some discussion earlier in this process with the county that they would not have a problem with the removal of that?
Um, when I talked to the county about it, they said they wouldn't have a problem with removing the four parking spaces that were angled. I didn't specifically bring up the curb, but to me, that seems like it's probably, like, my suggestion would be, let's see if we can reach out to the county, like municipality, municipality, and just see if that's an okay. But we could follow up with a referral, which is a formal process that they have to do within thirty days.
But wouldn't the reality be that if we make, I like Mr. McPartland's suggestion of making this referral, let Mr. Nikki stripe, the worst thing that could happen is within this month's time, if they come back with something, there would be a couple barricades up on two parking spaces for a few weeks
Mm-hmm.
before the removal of the curb and whatever small patch has to go in, I think is a reasonable solution, because if it, if we keep, I know this has been a very long, long process, but if, if we think we're at the point where we've already expressed our concern with these four parking spaces that were added in, in the county's previous project, we were critical of them, we, we know that they were put in there just for numbers and they had some layout issues. So I think if we send this to them, it's a step in the right direction, it gets the conversation going, and we can tell them what our position is on the curb. I'm fine with that approach.
So what's the difference there then would be to just have the resolution and, and here's what we're doing. And if they come back at some point in time, well, we'll make corrections, but it'll, you know, kind of forcing their hand. I mean, the other option is, you know, if Laura said we call for tentative resolution, we call and have it worked out so the tenant, we don't have a tenant, we actually have a resolution at the next meeting. Either way works for me.
What allows us to complete this the fastest? Which option? Because I'm, I'm, I'm lost a little bit, to be honest with you.
Uh, well, I think having the resolution, just doing it, and then, you know, later on, that's
I'm happy to do it, and if the county has a problem, I'll rebuild the curb.
I think it's okay.
You don't want to
I understand.
Yeah.
It's not an expensive thing, it's just that at this point, we're gonna open and we're gonna have people sitting on the ground again.
Yep, that's why we're talking about it and trying to get there.
I mean, I think it's okay to call to a tentative resolution. If we can meet that timeline, we will. If we can't, it has to move to April, but he can still open up the ice cream window. It's the best that we can do.
Okay.
Okay.
I really don't have an option, right? Okay, so to get my, okay, really doesn't matter at this point. I would love you to make the phone call to the county, I'm disappointed that has
Well, it sounds like Laura's gonna try both, both avenues.
I know, I heard that.
We got, we're, we're calling for tentative resolution, we're gonna do our best to, to have this worked out for the twenty-seventh.
All right, we'll be open
And, and we can amend that resolution if we get information between now and then, and we've done that before at previous meetings, so let's not let the curb
Let's not let the curb block anything?
Correct.
I would love, again, for the record, to be include many discussions about what's happening on town land adjacent to that with Metroplex. We do feel that the process is dragging on even something like, please don't stripe, because we want to make sure that we have Metroplex's ideas wrapped up first before we make any decision. Have somebody who's a tenant in the town, contributes to the town, who's wanting to do this at their own expense, not do it while we wait for another entity that's not a part of the town to come up with what they're gonna contribute out of pocket.
I don't want to diminish
It's just wrong.
the, the investment in time and effort you've made already, but have you personally reached out to any representatives of Metroplex, or maybe you have?
I have, I've spoken during the process of paving with Jamie LaHut
Yep.
regarding the paving, and they're interested in doing something with tables and chairs. I sent him the drawing, then they began speaking to the town, and that's the last I've heard from them.
So respectfully, um, it's the town's right-of-way, and the town is trying to do the best thing that it can for all parties that are involved. I know that it's frustrating, the way the timeline for government works. That frustration level, I think, comes almost on any project that comes before the board. But it's the town's right-of-way, and the town is trying to figure out how to best balance all of the interests that the town considers, not just one. And it does take time, and I appreciate the patience that you're having with this process. As soon as I am able, I will bring all the parties to the table, that's what planners do. Um, but it's going to take some time.
And I look forward to that, because again, we've met two
I have been working with multiple people to move forward.
But not us.
I am using the submitted to try and help this project move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Nikki, I mean, we're cognizant of your plan, it's part of the public record, and so I think, you know, we know what it is that you want to do, and I think Laura's communicating to the county and whatever other parties, the city highway department, what it is you want to do, clearly based on the drawings and the submittals, so I understand why you'd feel like you want to be included, and I appreciate that. But I also think that based on the information that's been submitted and it's part of the public record, the parties are gonna be aware of what it is that you're proposing.
I would hope so.
Okay, all right, so we got tentative resolution, Laura will reach out to the county and hopefully get there and have that resolution on the agenda for the next meeting on twenty-seventh.
If we don't hear anything before that meeting, then what?
Well, we'll, I'm sure
Open your ice cream window.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, Laura will keep in touch with us and the project lead, and we'll, we'll touch base a week, see when we're at. That's all we can do.
Is that it?
Yep. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's see, twenty-eight, three-seven, Aqueduct Road, that's, uh, Rivers Ledge. Thank you for hanging out with us, as always. We've had some long meetings, we appreciate everybody's investment in time, you guys also back there. Okay, thank you.
So I think the last time we left off, we were, uh, waiting on garage renderings, and, uh, sent those over to Laura and Clark, and I can share those with the board.
Yeah, so we definitely saw the one set, I mean, one thing we'd also requested is also the height view.
Yep, and they're working on that as well.
Okay. I mean, you know, Dave, I'll get your opinion here from the architectural review board, right, but
I, yeah, I, I mean, it's a good first pass, I guess I'm a little it, it's interesting that you're adding a little hood over, over the, or underneath the main gable between the little projecting gables. So is that meant to just extend out further to conceal lighting?
Yeah, conceal, it was
Okay.
HCP was concealing lighting under that, because that was a concern of the boards the last time. But then also introduces the character of our front entrances in phase one, and some of the metal roof details that we had, but also complements, uh, the row housing, uh, breakup that we had on the senior component as well. Tried to do masonry on the bottom half, uh, we don't like doing hardy or vinyl siding down to grade, because, on, to finish grade, because with plowing and whatnot, it ends up breaking up over time and looking cruddy. We kept some of the, the, the build-outs and supports that we had in phase one, and some of the character that we had brought in then to our, uh, clubhouse and rec building as well, because the rec building will be close to these buildings as well, uh, you can see in that last site plan that Laura just had up.
Oh, this one?
You can see the character on our front lobby entrance, um, in the, the, um, inside part of the alley of the building. That's where our metal roofs kind of took from phase one into phase two, and we introduced that character into the parking garages.
Now, you're also gonna, there's gonna be a rendering too of where you're gonna have an entrance that's right opposite from the parking in the back, right?
That's correct.
So
We can run a rendering for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll want to see the complete.
Yeah.
Right, um, were you gonna put a side entrance for the side parking? Or those folks have to walk around either to the front or back of the building?
So I think I sent, Laura, do you, we have the floor plan as well?
I didn't get a new floor plan.
It, it wasn't new, it was stuff that was there before.
The last one from
Oh, yeah, you have that, yeah.
So they're working on the architectural revision.
That one? Oh, there's a lag.
Yes.
That one?
So that side entrance there
Okay.
is where the clubhouse will be, and it's not shown in the rendering as well, but there's a back entrance to that pink area
Okay.
as well. It's the only thing that the arrows are showing is like core space entrance.
But you need to do some kind of a hallway, like, right through the middle.
That's correct, that's what they're working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because they had to take a look at the stacking of the structural.
Um, going back to the layout of the garages along the long side of the back, what's the purpose of the spacing between the garages? The three, the, the double spacing as opposed to one continuous structure?
Uh, I, I honestly think that was just, um, taken probably from when we were looking at panels or carports. But I guess looking at it right now, I think it would, it would, having a break there may add some character, um, and not just having one long structure.
It's, it's character, but it's also a little of an alleyway, right?
I'm not gonna say we, we planned on the character, but I think ultimately those spaces were left out for structural supports or something originally.
Maybe.
So, so if it, I, I, I don't, I don't mind the idea of the three separate buildings there, I think that's fine. The only thing I think that we would be concerned about is that becomes a catch-all for garbage or
Right, right, so that's
You know, extra things. If there was a, a smaller roof that connected it, or a vision panel, or a gate on the back side that was more of a screen, I think, you know, maybe there are gates or something that your maintenance could, people could take advantage of.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We have golf carts and maintenance, uh, ATVs
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'd like, I, I don't want it to end up being a little small alleyway or
Right, yeah.
you know, garbage dump or whatever else it could be. You know, garbage dump or whatever else it could be.
Right.
You know, you know, those folks on the bike path, they can just, uh.
Yeah.
Along those lines, what, what is between the bike path? And it looks like there's going to be a small retaining wall.
Yeah, the retaining wall was always there originally. Um, and what we're, what we had had was is we were proposing some screening trees at the bottom of the retaining wall. And we originally had screening trees where the garages are, right? But now ultimately that is being screened by the garage.
So the garage, the backside of the garage is visible from the bike path?
Yep.
Yeah. And we'll want to see what that side looks like too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can run a rendering of the backside or that may even be visible in the cut section that we're generating that we kind of started doing those cut sections from the outpost, phase one.
Yeah, that was a complete streets concern that it's a long section of building right next to the bike path. So they would want to see that that was broken up somehow or something.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
So, yeah, I mean, it's a conflicting thing with.
The retaining walls and stuff too. We've done stuff before, not on our works, but on public works where we planted some type of vine growth plantings that, you know, that it's not going to be right at the time of construction completion that they would look at their finest. But over time that those vine growth could take the, the course of the retaining wall on the backside. So maybe that's a way that we could break up the, the vision of, uh, that long, long wall there. Coupled by maybe some trees kind of staggered along the bike trail as well.
We've been saying this to 31 East Street, who's not here tonight, but screening from any structure this close to the bike path can be really key.
Yep.
And then just also bringing it up because there was a lot on our agenda, all of the agenda statements. But the other thing that Complete Streets brought up, which I had never thought of, but I thought might be cool. Is that, well, one, because this commercial area is hopefully going to be like a nice rest stop maybe for people on the bike rack, is to incorporate a bike rack in your proposal near the commercial space. And they suggested a covered one. And then also there's these like free bike maintenance stations that have been installed in nearby communities. And, um, they recommended potentially that we might be able to do one, or you guys might be able to put one in the, like the public parking spot or somewhere near the building. I guess they're pop up and they're quite nice and people use them a lot. And it would add amenity right there for the bike path.
And we could look at introducing that even in our clubhouse with another dedicated entrance. So like, one of the things we did at our, usually when we have underground parking and now that you bring that up, we're going to lose it here. Is we have, uh, bike lockers. So that typically they're in our garages, you pull them out.
Oh yeah, that was another thing they said that you should plan for bike, um, for covered storage racks for residents too, somewhere.
Yeah. So we, we, we already looked at that. Covered storage racks, I don't think is something that we're going to ultimately be able to fit in this building footprint. But I do think we may be able to, uh, address having indoor bike storage with some type of exterior entrance. Similar to how we lay out our dog wash stations. We usually just have them ex, exterior entrance only.
Yeah. Cause hopefully that would be a selling point, right? Like live here and you can have your bicycle and just bike miles up and down on a, not a road, right? I mean, that's really good.
A lot of people in phase one, they ultimately had their own private garage.
Right. Where they can store their bikes.
But there is a, there isn't a difference here. So most people I think would store their bikes in their garage space, but we are, oh no, we're still, we're still 55 for 55.
Yeah.
We'll have to look into it. We'll have to see. I mean, I think a lot of folks will take, uh, user garage spots for that, but we'll look into it as well. I'll talk to our property management staff and think, have them kind of analyze what they believe feedback is from the residents on the vest amenities.
Yeah. And look into the bike mate, free bike maintenance stations.
Okay.
All right. So in general.
Questions.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay. Um, other garages, are there going to be walls between the units? I see ash lines.
Yes, there'll be, there'll be, uh, demising walls between each garage.
Okay. Um, I don't see any exterior handles on the garage doors. Are you planning garage door openers?
Yes.
Is the reason why no windows on them?
Uh, we usually stay away from the windows because over time they like fog out and become a maintenance headache. And you're replacing panels at that point or whole garage doors, which is like uneconomical. If you're replacing single panels, you're never matching the sun fade. So we try to stay away from, for maintenance purposes.
Okay.
Um, so the garage door openers will include light units?
Yes, there'll be probably recess cans in the ceiling, including a garage door light that will kick on as well.
And maybe a, an actual switch in case they go in for another reason, need light?
Yeah, it'd probably be an occupancy switch to meet all the local energy codes.
Okay.
So actually Leslie raised a question. So in case of a blackout?
There's an emergency. Yeah. One, there will always be, per code, there should always be an emergency light in a space.
So no, no, that's light, but if they wanted to get the door open. So when it's, when it's inside your house, you pull in the red cord and you, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if there'd be any, there'd be no override, I guess, from the outside. But inside there's an emergency cord. Yeah, that's standard on garage.
Right. Yeah. So like, I mean, if there is a power outage, they can't get it to get the car, right?
Yeah, correct.
Unless there's a door on the other side?
Since there's walls and you each have to have their own door unless they're all open.
Yeah. So that's something to think about.
My sub, it's a good question. I had never even thought of that. I can ask Madison over doors if there's like a battery backup or something in the driver. I, I'm not sure though. I'll ask him that.
Yeah. Yeah. My neighbor just put one in and it has a real small battery on there.
On it as a backup?
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe that's the right solution.
Yep.
Yeah. I'll, I'll double check with our vendor.
Yeah. Yeah. Folks will need access to their vehicles if there's a blackout.
Probably isn't that much more. Actually now the price of them have come quite a bit, so.
Yeah. And most of the standard garage doors too. So it's, uh, if you lose your, your visor clip or your garage door opener, they also work with an app. So.
Right.
That's what phase one had.
All right. So in general, uh, you know, thumbs up, just, you know, obviously the architectural review board will.
Yeah, they'll take a look at it. Uh, just one other quick comment. Where your gables are, you've got that little teeny piece of roof that kind of connects the, right, right where the triangular gable is.
Yep.
Yeah. You get rid of that. See where the, you have a little sliver of roof that runs horizontally underneath the gable.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What you think it would look better.
Yeah. Then, then you break up the facade a little bit more.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. That's about two shingles, two and a half shingles wide.
Yep. We can look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And don't put a fake Koopa on it to make up.
No.
No, I, I, I think it, the, breaking up the roof line is good because it, it, it gives it a little bit of a rhythm. Okay? And then the thing is, I think if you connect those things and use that as bike storage or something else to keep clutter and just garbage and stuff in there, take it to your advantage. There's a roof on or secure it. I think it's only to your benefit.
Yep.
Um, and, and then what, how you work out the lighting, I think will be fine. Now, the, the opposite side facing the bike path probably is just going to be a blank wall, correct?
Yes. The brick would continue. So the brick, brick will be on all four sides of the elevation, as you can kind of see on the break wall there.
Right.
And it would also carry around the back as well.
Okay. Would you mimic the gable on the back end or would you just leave it as a, as a, as a flat roof all the way across the back?
Uh, I would take whatever you folks' thoughts are. I don't even know if we had any thought into that yet, other than this elevation of it. But I could ask HCP.
Right. I mean, the goal there would be something that breaks up the.
The length of it. And I do think that HCP did a good job with that. So I, I would be more than happy to add that to the back of the building as well.
Yeah.
Another thing Laura, I was just thinking too, uh, on the length of that wall along the bike trail. One thing Peter had brought up, I think, one time with us on a walkthrough was utilizing the canal blocks, um, that have been left over in that staging area down in the park. We could maybe look at using those on the, you know, if they stayed on state property, we were good to use them per ship out. Maybe we could look at using those blocks to be designed in such a way to, to continue that wall design that we had coming up the bike trail with those crossings that we worked through.
Yeah.
With that, I mean, it, it's either going to be a ready rock block product, most likely. We usually use that. It's a gravity based retaining wall system. But when I look, you know, we could look with our structural engineers on what we've already done with the canal blocks on the other one.
Yeah.
From a density, I think we'd be able to use those battered.
I mean, I think from the bike path, it would be nicer to use the canal core, the canal blocks because, uh, otherwise they're just in a pile. But that way you sort of get to see them kind of looking like a canal. But you're still having drainage problems behind the canal blocks on the, on the, on the path. So you've got to figure out how to, how to not have stuff erode through, through.
Yeah. I think that was a design issue. I, ultimately, I think we got to do something different than what Weston Sampson had shown there for rear drainage.
Yeah.
It could be a membrane or something along the back.
Still, I walked it the other day and you gotta go down there and patch up the stormwater.
Yeah.
It's not surviving the winter.
Oh, yeah. There's, I think we got to get turf established is ultimately the problem. But yeah, a lot of sand down there as well.
Yeah.
So you're getting erosion onto the bike path.
Through the canal blocks. Yeah. So I mean, I would think that it would be a good use of them to put them along the bike path where more people can see them. Um, but you're going to have to figure out the drainage behind them.
Some type of diaphragm or something behind it. Ultimately, the design was is to take the sand earth, because it perked, and put it directly behind a canal blocks with the sands leaching through.
Just comes right there.
We got to put some filter fabric in a drainage.
If you've done a ready rock system, it's almost identical. You've got to have the, the membrane layers in there and the pipes.
Yeah. Yep. So we'll look at, if there's not huge lines of it, something that we could easily add.
Yeah. I think it would look like, as long as it wasn't eroding, I think it would look really nice to have more canal blocks along the bike path. They're, they're cool. Even when you just walk along them on the park, it's very cool to be able to see them and touch them.
I had a question. So for the long strip of the garages, right, that runs in the, the back, we'll say, and you have that sidewalk. Do you have any plans for how residents can get from the garages to the sidewalk safely? Like is.
Yeah, there'll be some ADA drops. And I believe Brett has one central one, but we could look at also adding some supplementary ones maybe down at, if I, if I were to add one at each garage. And we can fine tune this a little bit as well. When we get the, uh, the door designs kind of finalized with the architectural, like help Brett off on doing any other revisions till we had those access points. But once we get those flushed out, I think we should be at a final drawing.
I'm like, I don't know if it's a topography issue or not, but it may be worth it to bring this parking just slightly forward so that you can put some green space between the building and the sidewalk in the back.
Yeah. He doesn't have any there?
No. It goes building sidewalk asphalt.
Okay.
You know, like, I think maybe originally it was like, oh, we'll try and save some existing trees, but you're not going to save any existing trees. You're going to have to replant on the front. And so it may be worth shifting it down a little so that you can add like this, this has this, like add something like that back there, don't you think?
Yeah. And I believe on the front of the building too, we could look at that. So he has, he's conservatively without knowing what we were doing for outdoor, um, access. I think he carried an eight foot seven sidewalk in front of the commercial.
Oh yeah, it does say eight foot seven here.
Knowing Peter, he'll want to have a four foot planting strip in front of the, the window.
Yeah. I mean, this is just, this is, this is not, this is going to be as, you know, garage asphalt, concrete building. Like you've got to, you've got to put something.
I'll talk to Brett about it. We'll double check the turn radius into the garage and see how much room we can grab with maintaining.
Yeah. Even if you end up pushing the building just a couple of feet forward.
Yeah.
So if you have four feet, you're going to plant something. If you have six to eight feet, people are actually going to sit outside. So it's almost like the depth of a porch.
Yep.
You have a three foot porch, you don't put anything on it. You don't sit out there. So if, I think we had talked about that before. There's so much hardscape around this. If you could break that up on both sides of the building.
Yeah.
Especially for the tenants that are going to be on the first floor. The ones facing those garages are looking out towards garages. If they can get some sort of greenscape or up to like eight feet, they have a terrace.
Yep.
And it's next to the sidewalk. There'll be some, you know, it's that, it's that public zone that they have that's semi-private before you, you, you know, you actually get into the town home.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get.
I think it'd be worthwhile to just shift that building down. I, I agree with Laura. I think you're going to lose the trees regardless, so.
Yep. We'll get green space on all four elevations in the building. That was a mess.
Okay. So what's the next action? Basically complete, uh, your sketches and everything and get those in and, uh, you know, at least let the ARB take a cursor, look at it, right?
They work on the roof plan yet?
What's up?
Have they made any progress on the roof?
Yeah, they're working on that now as well. That's why they wanted to ultimately flush out where comments were with the, with the planning board. We kind of got those figured out with access. We also did our own internal review. Now they'll start the structural stacking, structural plans and the roof design. Yep.
I mean, you know, in summary, right? The, but the board has effectively signaled that we're okay with outdoor garages, one for one. So it's now the detail of, again, how they're going to look and is it going to give the, um, you know, the effect that you want?
Yep. Final coordination and just making sure everything's talking to one another. Absolutely.
Yep. Sounds good.
And landscaping plan.
Landscaping plan. So then we'll be kicked back to conservation council, tree committee, right? Architectural review board. Are we at a level where at least architectural review board, we have updated renderings? We got the garage designs. Can we get one of those meetings with the other?
Chuck, Chuck, this is, this is Clark. We actually have been keeping the ARB up to date on these projects. So then we have a call on Wednesday. So if you and/or your architect could, uh, pop into that, that would be great. Eight thirty on Wednesday.
That would work. I'll have Ben come.
I'll send you a link. That'd be great. Thanks.
It's a virtual meeting, that, uh, Clark?
They're always virtual.
It's always virtual.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Send somebody so he can participate.
Yeah, you'll send a link then, Clark, you said?
Yes, I'll send you the link.
Thank you.
We, we've had a couple other with Chuck and his architect and they've all gone very well.
Okay. Thanks, Clark. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks again. We're getting there. I know we've probably got Chase Bank online again. I appreciate everybody hanging with us.
You're not last.
Oh, let's see. Thirty-nine hundred State Street Kia Automotive Automobile Lot.
Uh, Devin Dickinson for the record from CHA here with Vincent Salvini from Matthews Auto Group and Teresa Baker from Boynton. Astronim and Hannah, close. Uh, so kind of last minute here, but we're trying to respond to some of the concerns of the neighbors and board and all that stuff. Do you guys mind if I pass out some paper copies?
No, you can do that. And Laura can pull it up obviously on the computer there also, so.
Is this what's in our packet or this is new?
If you might, you can just, we can hand them all, we'll pass them down and then you can.
Thanks, Devin.
Multiple photos and things like that, but I'll, I'll go through it. So, um, so for the record, I'll kind of go through the background again. I'm trying not to be too long-winded here, but so Matthews recent, recently purchased the Kia dealership in the last year or so. They were approached by the owners of seventeen twenty-five and thirty-three South Fagan to purchase their properties to use as they saw fit for the dealership. Um, after a little bit of research, they realized it was a commercial highway zone, became interested in the properties, entered into a contract conditional of getting the town approvals. Bring this here. Um, as you know, they're looking to combine three lots, build a parking lot as it's shown. This project is an unlisted action for secret review. We have designed the parking lot to be consistent with the town of Niskiuna zoning and parking requirements. Um, even though as you all know, it's gonna be used as a new car dealer lot. It's not necessarily gonna be an open to the public display lot. I think it's gonna be used primarily as an overflow lot. So you're really not gonna see a lot of foot traffic, um, from the general public. That's really not the intent of the parking lot. It's also lends itself to being very well screened. You know, we're not here to advertise these cars to the general public. So what we've kind of done here is we've been back and forth with you guys and taken into consideration your comments and the public there is, is we have a, uh, you know, a, a plan that's mixed use in nature. This is a, a mixed use type of neighborhood. Yes, it is zone, commercial highway. You know, we really made a, a point to follow the zoning regulations in chapter two twenty dash forty-eight for this zone. You know, the zone has been amended many times through the years up until like two thousand sixteen. So I think we're looking at the most recent, you know, zoning iteration here. I think that's, it's important that it has been thought of by the town, this commercial highway zone. As recently as two thousand sixteen. Um, there were some concerns brought up about lighting. You know, we have discussed it at prior meetings. We're doing very, very minimal lighting. We have two lights uh, in their landscaped islands and we have one at the entrance. Again, these lights are really just for safety. Um, this is not a display lot. We talked in prior meetings as well that we're willing to work with you on height of lights, bring that height down a little bit. Reduce any kind of glare. So this was designed with the single entrance. We discussed that before as well. I know the original design had a dual entrance exit. Um, so we've gone to a single entrance. We've talked about the flow of traffic between the three lots, not having to go on State Street. I think that's an important point because it really does eliminate a lot of, uh, potential for accidents, traffic flow, you know, pulling out across those four lanes to take a left into the dealer shop. Dealer lot is very difficult, so my guess is they probably run through all those back neighborhoods right now. Would be my guess. So things that have changed from the last site, um, I think Laura and the board had requested a sidewalk from the southeast property line all the way out to State Street. So that is one of the changes you're gonna see there. Um, we've also added street scape, specific trees between the sidewalk and the paved roads. We're really kind of creating this nice landscaped uh, travel way there. We have, and it is in your packet there with the plans, the second sheet. So, so we've expanded on the vehicle path for the car hauler and actually designated two locations for offloading vehicles, one on the dealer lot and one on the new parking lot. I know that was a concern of the board and, um, the neighbor twenty-six South Fagan there. Minor change that isn't gonna show up well in this plan, though, we did slide the whole parking lot about ten feet to the north. North on this plan is the Kia dealership lot. And, uh, the idea there was to give a little bit more buffer to the house at forty-one South Fagan. Um, gives us a chance to get some more plantings in there and, uh, just overall separation between the neighbor. Lastly, um, before I get into the photos there, we also did, as a show of good faith, add a landscaped island to the reconditioning lot. Do you mind if I just kind of point it out to you just for clarity?
See it.
You know, there was some discussion about that. Um, the trees you see on the other islands are existing. Those are there. They're gonna remain. Um, so we did add that little landscaping area there. Wasn't a lot more that we could really do there. We tried to really kind of maximize what they have there. Um, so let's go into the site photos because I think this gives a good representation of the site and I think it helps to address some of the concerns with the neighbor there. So there's kind of an overview again, just to give you an idea of the whole area. Um, I'll come back to the tree narrative there. So the first page of the photos there, obviously the numbers associated with the photos, give you an idea where I took them, what the direction was. So photo number one is looking out the driveway, uh, from seventeen South Fagan. That's the parcel closest to the dealer lot. And this is the existing driveway. We are actually proposing, we brought this up in other meetings, uh, for the new. I did not, no. Yeah, sorry. This, this got finished at four o'clock.
Yeah, so, yeah. So what page are you referring to?
This one.
Page five.
Yeah, so five of ten here in the, in the photos. So a, a, again, I think this is, you know, an important, uh, an important point to make is that you know, this was a thought out process and location for this parking is to keep it in the same location as the existing driveway. The additional width, as you can see, is all towards the dealer lot. And this photo really clearly shows that this is gonna point at the reconditioning lot. And again, that was a calculated design point. You know, the first plan had a second entrance that was right across the street from the house twenty-six South Fagan. That is long gone. Um, if you go to the second page there, uh, similar location, we just turned a little bit and, and here, what I'm really trying to highlight is that there's some really good screening, um, already in place at the house at twenty-six South Fagan. I think it also shows a little bit of the, you know, massive amount of pavement that's, that's present on the street right now. And I think the, you know, the point to be made here is we really are adding a lot of screening. We have a lot of screening trees here and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit here, but. So the third photo is, is interesting. This is actually standing at the edge of the road, um, in front of that parking area. And you can see there is a very, very clear view with the back of the house is on South Van Hur Street. And, you know, when you really look at our planting plan, we're adding trees along the road, trees in front of the parking and trees in the back, um, to really try and help screen this. And all the large trees that you're seeing in these photos are going to remain. There's no, no plan to take any of those trees down.
So, so this spruce tree came up in the discussions with the one neighbor. Where is that in these photos? Is that, is that it right there on page seven? On the left side of the frame?
Yeah.
Yes. We'll get to this spruce tree.
Okay, so you're not planning on taking it down?
No.
That was the tree council's big ask.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through that. I'm gonna discuss the trees.
Good, okay.
So, uh, in any case, so photo number four on page eight there, this really is a pretty minor photo, but I think it just, again, I'm just trying to make the point that you, you know, we've planned where all these access points are gonna be, those large trees on the left there are not coming down, those are all gonna remain. You know, we're gonna sneak through that little pocket there onto the dealer lot. So photo number five here again really illustrates the, the massive amount of pavement that is located on the south side of South Fagan. Um, you know, it's hard to visualize here, but if you can really visualize how many trees we plan to plant along the road specifically with the sidewalk, but then again, also, um, you know, in front of that parking area. There's gonna be a night and day difference between the north side and the south side. Uh, my last page? Okay, so last photo, this is more to discuss kind of the trees that are on site. And I'll get into this in a little bit more detail, but, um, the spruce tree is on the left-hand side of that photo and, and one of the points I want to bring up is that I believe it's a Norway maple there is crowding that tree. It's actually growing up into the spruce tree. Um, there are also some issues with vines and things growing in spruce as well. Uh, I highly doubt these were really planned plantings and I think that's one of the problems with the Norway maples in general, is they are invasive and they spread. Um, I do have a little tree narrative that had our landscape group, um, put together there. They took a look at the trees that were on site, so it does go in a little bit more detail. I won't read the entire thing to you, but the general idea behind it is that there are a lot of Norway maples present on site, which is an invasive tree. Um, the Norway spruce is not a native tree to New York, but it is a good tree. It does offer habitats and those things like I discussed there. So we are going to reconfigure the plan to save the spruce tree. Um, we do plan to remove the other trees just because they are, one, it's a design issue, two, they are nuisance trees, most of them. Um, there are some that are in poor health. One has a top taken off completely. And I do want noted in the record, and again, I know you have this document here, but we are going to plant twenty-two deciduous trees. Um, eight of them are gonna be along, what did I show there? Nine, got an extra tree. Nine will be along, um, South Fagan as street scape trees. And then we're gonna plant a mix of thirty evergreen trees and bushes as well.
And these are gonna go in as new plantings or mature plantings or?
We'll do a mix. So my plan is, uh, um, you know, loosely here in a concept design is I know that a, a big part of the tree council is native plants. Again, that's just good design. Um, so we'll probably do a mix of different native deciduous trees. Nothing outrageous, maples, things like that. The evergreens will take a little bit more planning. You know, a lot of evergreens are kind of messy trees and, and you know, you still want a, a good look to it. Um, so that would probably be more of a mix between trees and maybe some shrubs. Again, trying to fill upper level screening and lower level screening. Um, so I think that's pretty much it. I think we went through, you know, the parking general as well as, you know, those few changes that we've made here. You know, I think overall it's a good project. We've gone through a lot of iterations with you guys. Um, I think, you know, importantly, that it meets the, the comprehensive plan, it meets the town code. And I think we're really looking forward here tonight is, is a positive recommendation to the town board here on the special use permit, so we can keep moving with this process.
For the, uh, uh, turning radiuses, whether, uh, both directions, uh, a truck could come in from State Street either direction to offload?
So what we did with the, um, the truck turning, the issue with State Street is that existing curb cut on the dealership lot is not conducive to pulling in that way. So we ran truck turns through the reconditioning lot all the way up through the dealership that way. We also ran it from South Fagan into the new parking through the dealership. So they have essentially three different paths that they can take without going into the neighborhood.
So the preferred path would be South Fagan?
Preferred path, I think, organically, they're gonna come.
Turn right into the, and then through.
Yeah.
All right. So the only thing is, um, so one thing you might want to consider, I guess it's a deep detail would be, you know, how do they know that, whether it be, uh, a signage somewhere on State Street or somewhere, obviously nice signage if there's such a thing. Yeah, you know, or on your purchase orders or delivery requirements that it's stated, you know, here's the, how the deliveries occur.
So we do have, um, we do have an overview of the site that we provide to all of the truckers or, or to the OEMs, to the manufacturers, to provide to their hauling companies. Obviously, once this is done, we'll update that with a preferred path. Uh, I do think signage probably be a great idea. Truck deliveries. Point them in the right direction.
Yep.
To the extent that anything that happens between seven AM and seven PM when we were there. It's just, it's muscle memory over time for someone who doesn't get the memo. Now we actually have somewhere to go tell them this is the new plan. Right now, if they're parked in the middle of State Street and they're not supposed to be, we don't know what to tell them.
Right. You have no options now.
We don't have a choice. This will create, uh, the best option that we've had um, for a lot of our dealerships from, from a dedicated.
That's good.
Delivery area.
I mean, that's a positive thing. I was concerned from, you know, what State Street, no matter where they're at, it's a concern, right? It's interesting. I took that defensive driving class and this actually came up. And the teacher is a twenty or twenty-five year veteran of one of the local police departments. And the question came up, you know, what are you doing about these haulers offloading? And the answer was, well, they have nowhere to go, so we just try to work with them and let them, let them go. So it's good that we're being proactive that that came up, you know, to, to try to see if we can at least help it in this situation. So I appreciate your effort there. I'm having a tough time reconciling this drawing with the truck path drawing. There's a little bit of a change in some of the plantings over here that needs to happen, right?
There could be. So, so part of that is, um, you know, an aerial photo, so some of those are existing trees that are highlighted. Um, if you look closely, they are slightly different. You know, you'll see a lot of uniformity of the trees that we're proposing.
Right. I mean, the, the key thing is it's essential to provide the trucks this path and the unloading spots. I think that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a hard requirement, I think, for this.
Yep, absolutely. And there, and there, you know, I'm sure like Vinnie said, I mean, there'd be some growing pains there, but you know, it's been there a long time. But this is a step in the right direction and it's only gonna get better, so.
To your point, Mr. Com, I know you said it's gonna be a hard requirement. It's desirable.
Yep.
Us as well to have the solution. So it's, we appreciate
Yep.
the ability to incorporate.
Yeah. What do you think, Mr. Carlin?
Uh, well, um, I just wanna reiterate, I think, the several design iterations that, that Devin, uh, and the applicant have gone through to, um, reduce the, um, number of curb cuts on Fagan. Um, really, really provide a very strong buffering, landscape buffer. And, um, also address of, 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 a, a big concern of our board, Complete Streets Committee and the, and the neighbors um, in, in having a, um, a vehicle delivery plan. Um, I, I think those are all really, really well done. So want to commend you on that. Um, just wanna underscore the importance of having a formal procedure and your role as, as the owner in enforcing the vehicle delivery plan, um, at least in the early days. So you, you've already kind of stated that, Mr. Salvani, but, uh, that's, that's important to us and Laura, I, I, I feel as though if possible, the town should even look at signage on South Fagan that says no standing will be enforced.
Think to Chairman's comment, if the residents call the police on these cars, I believe the police go out and make the move right now. That's my understanding.
And really, this is a layup for those truck guys. They can pull in and pull out.
Yeah, that's how it looks.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd want to do that.
Yeah. So, thank you. Um, a couple of questions. Um, I wanted to know what consideration has been given since our last meeting to the prospect of saving the residents on thirty-three Fagan?
I think the general consensus is that it just doesn't conform with the project. You know, there's no intent here to be landlords. And I think in order to do the parking and then make that house saleable, you're just creating an issue for somebody who'd be right on top of that house. Um, I looked at it again last week. It's not in great shape. Um, not that it couldn't be updated, repaired, but that's really not the scope of what these guys are doing. I mean, I, I, I think I speak for you that, you know, you're not.
And I, I echo everything that Devin said. The the number of iterations that we have gone through to make this work, I, I think what we have is is, is really the edge of how we make this work. The project, if if we start incorporating anything else, the changes that that it creates for us are domino effects. Um, and it ultimately ends up with us owning a home that we don't desire to habitate or rent or we're just, that's not part of our business. So the, the purchase of that property, the sole purchase of those properties was for this plan and, and that's if, if there was a compromise that would work for us, we were unable to figure out how to incorporate that, that house into it. It was considered at length.
Okay, good. Yeah, I know the mechanics would have been tricky given that you've got a, um, you've got a, you, you've got some contract with the owner of twenty, of thirty-three who also owns twenty-five. But you, but how do you, how do you make a lot line adjustment? Or how do we have that owner make a lot line adjustment? That would be a separate action really. In, in, you know, that would probably also be contingent on the sale of their, the, the residence that remains. So the, the mechanics of that were, were always a little tricky. You know, I, I'll just, I'll just reiterate that, um, you know, it's, it's I think with the reason that we wanted to know it was strongly considered is, um, when you look at how the, the parking lays out, there's actually no, there's no, uh, there's no use really, you know, the, the use of that, that area of the parcel that where, where the home would be demolished is really just for landscape buffer. So, um, you know, and, and there is, there is some language in our comp plan about, you know, avoiding the, uh, it, it cautions against any development of commercial use in this area of town that, that overwhelms or consumes the residential properties. So, uh, you know, we have an obligation to look at that and, and, um, you know, personally, I think, um, this, this plan represents, um, 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 mitigation of a lot of the concerns we had about the change in the character of the neighborhood. But it also is a significant improvement to your, your, your vehicle. Um, but it also is a significant improvement to your, your, your vehicle inventory storage. Um, so to that end, I've said it before, I want to be sure that we are taking a view, a holistic approach at looking at all of the available parking um, on all of the sites that are contiguous and, and owned by Matthews as a part of this, the larger parcel, uh, including the vehicle reconditioning site across the street. So my, my preference, my strong preference would be to have a final site plan that actually shows striped parking spaces and, and dimensions out the, the vehicle reconditioning site as well.
Yeah. So I was going to ask you that, Patrick, and I'm glad you said it, right? I do, I do agree with that.
I believe we did that in one of our first iterations, so I can.
Okay.
Make sure that you guys have that again.
Yep.
Just, just to know that we're maximizing the existing.
Yeah.
Existing asphalt.
Yep.
Is, is your goal to get a total count? Is that?
Well, I think, I think we can kind of, you know, do the map, do the math on that. The, the one, the one area where, as I look at it now, I feel as though is underutilized is still in terms of just if you look at sheer square footage of asphalt and number of cars you can park on it, it would appear that there's room for improvement on your reconditioning site.
Now, if it's delineated and organized, it seems like you could get.
Yeah.
You know, until you do it, you know, it seems like you can get it.
Now, the reconditioning lot, with the nature of the business is dynamic. How those cars are moving, they're not there very long. Am I correct about that?
Lot of movement on that lot. Um, it, and I.
Not to say it couldn't be utilized, it's just a little train, stationary cars waiting for sale.
Does it convolute the situation that that's a separate owner of that parcel?
You know what? It's, it's, I, I could be wrong, but I assume that it's part of the same special permitted use.
Yeah, no, I'm not. I'm asking, am I allowed to pull that into this conversation? As it's not any of the addresses, it's not thirty-nine hundred. So showing that on part of this, is that, does that create an issue?
Is it owned, is it owned by Matthews Kia or an affiliate of you?
Do you? Yes.
It doesn't create an issue because you're asking for a special use permit on the South Fagan Ave lots. You're not asking for a special use permit on the thirty-nine hundred or the, or the, or the one. But in order to look at whether or not a special use permit could be justified on these new lots that don't currently have one, I think it's okay to look at all those parcels and put them all in the plan because they're all.
I'm not saying I, I'm not against doing that. Is it part of this plan or is this an addendum that I'm supposed to, a separate piece of this? I just don't want to tie something in and commit to something without knowing what I did.
Right. Um.
I think it's for information purposes, right? You want to see it striked, you want to see how it's.
Yeah, for all intents and purposes, I consider it part of Matthews Kia.
Okay.
And so.
Can you just come and speak? Ma'am, can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
I think that, I think the confusion he's having is just that we're not proposing to stripe that lot or proposing to make those changes. So what we're doing is theoretically showing how many spaces you could get on that lot to help inform your decision with respect to the parking areas that we have proposed.
Well, you know, respectfully, Mr. Salvani, you're coming to us with the justification that this, this is a need, this is a business need. Um, but you know, it's, it's quite clear as, as, as the eye can see that you do have, you do have parking that's utilized by the dealership on a daily basis on the vehicle reconditioning site.
Yes.
It's a part of your overall operation. And so, um, we've talked before about how in the nature of your business, you're always playing musical vehicles. You're always moving things around. And so to a certain extent, parking is fungible. You tell me that, you know, these spaces are new inventory, these spaces are old inventory, but you may have a twenty nineteen parked in a space that was earmarked for a twenty twenty-two on any given day.
I don't disagree with all of that. The, the mechanics of the reconditioning lot are, in that space, are much more volatile, much more fungible than the, than the lot that we're creating. So I wouldn't say that that's parking spaces. There are parking spaces there that we could utilize, but there are times where we can't park anything there because we have that many cars going through reconditioning. And it's a staging area to get them into the reconditioning area. So again, I agree. I, I would love to use it the way that, that I would draw it up for you to say, here's the best possible case. I don't want to commit to the board that that's our long-term intention, that that piece of property operates much differently than the other two pieces of property that we're talking about. That's all I wanted to point out. But yes.
Understood.
If, if at some point we correct flow and we can get one side of it as just inventory and, and, and not have a logjam of reconditioning cars, it, it only helps us. Um, so I can show you what that would look like best case scenario. If, if that helps. It's, um, every single car we sell goes through there and we sell a hundred and fifty cars a month. So.
Used inventory.
New go there.
You recondition new vehicles?
So it's not a reconditioning, but it's called a PDI process. Those cars come in and they're completely covered in tape.
Okay.
So they got to go over there. They still get vacuumed. They still get wiped down because of test drives. So yes, there is a prep for a new car, not a reconditioner. You're going to recondition the new car, but you definitely need to, it's about an hour and a half process to prep a new car for delivery.
So, so recognizing that your use of that parcel is very, it's very flexible and it changes from day to day, hour to hour. Um, I mean, at, at the very least, I want to know that, um, we're mitigating the amount of impervious surface on all parcels that are a part of the Matthews Kia operation. So, you know.
Our first iteration down to this iteration, I think we've lost between twenty-five and thirty-five spaces on the existing. I'm going to have to find that somewhere else because we needed that. So to your point, there is work to be done on our part on, on figuring out how to better use that reconditioning lot. It is not perfected at this point. I just wanted to make sure by showing it as part of this plan that I'm not committing to a use that I can't commit to. That's all.
Uh, yeah, just for the record, uh, um, the original application was, I can't remember, was it a hundred and forty parking spaces?
I saw one forty-four at one point. I'm not sure if that was accurate. I saw one fourteen.
Yeah, but I think it was like.
One twenty-six at some point.
Yeah. So where, where are we at now?
I believe there's ninety-six, ninety-four.
And I think that's important because, I mean, it obviously shows that, you know, the, the green space in the, you know, that you're adding, you know, is impacting the capacity and minimizing, you know, the, the, the amount of blacktop impervious surface and and will make it better for the neighborhood because, you know, more trees, can't see through it. Um, you know, it just could be better. Um, the neighbor, you know, there was one neighbor that wasn't able to make the public hearing, I believe it's Ms. Cummings is her name. So it's not like, you know, in a prior, now I'm going to say it's in priority, but her concerns were, you know, offloading was one, right? And people utilizing, uh, I believe her driveway or whatever, but that wasn't just Kia. It may have been somebody else also, you know, other contractors or whoever utilizing that. Uh, light spillage is a big concern. And, you know, the loss of that tree. And, you know, my view, and I guess she, she, she had to speak for herself, but it seems like at least the, the plantings and everything um, are going to improve things. And, uh, as long as that one light that you have, that's, it's shown in the drawing as you go in, uh, along that roadway, you know, the light stays on site. You know, I think that could, you know, minimize the concerns that I have for her, you know? Um, you know, you're talking about in the long-term future that you may have to do an upgrade to your, uh, uh, existing building to meet Kia standards. I can assure you, if you come in at that point in time, we're going to need to look at all the light fixtures from the pictures that she showed us earlier to make sure that, you know, the right types of fixtures are utilized, the correct temperature of light and, you know, that they're cut off and we can keep the light as much as possible on site. So if you ever get to that point, we'll, we'll give us an opportunity to hopefully improve the lighting over there to minimize, you know, the concerns with the neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely. We would, um, that's part, photometric is part of that process. I've been through that. This lot that we're talking about right now and existing lighting, you know, I, I'd commit to if, if there's specific lights that are that the heads have been tipped up and we need to tip them down a little bit right now, we'll adjust to. Um, we, we didn't know it was an issue until we knew it was an issue. We inherited the issue.
I understand.
But we'll fix it.
Yep. No, I appreciate it.
So on the proposed lot, I'm counting three, three lights? Is it three? Alright. And then, so some of them, so the one at the bottom here, there's one tree, then the other two in the middle, there's two trees on. Are those trees going to be the same height as that lamp post or is it going to be well over the trees? Is it a way where it could still provide light, but maybe keep it from expanding too far out?
Yeah, so I, I would say the lighting plan at this point is concept at best. You know, we've discussed it you know, to a certain degree, and I think once we move to the site plan, we'll, we'll get into more detail. Um, I think at this point, we're very open to lighting. So, um, you know, in my mind, from a safety standpoint, I think that's the bare minimum. Um, I think those two islands will give you just enough light if somebody did have to grab a car after dusk, um, they could feel safe enough to walk in there. I did want to light the entrance in case there are deliveries at night and that type of thing. But again, it doesn't have to necessarily be a tall light. It could be maybe a ground fixture on each side, something just to delineate so they're not going up and down the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I brought it up the last time. I think we should, you should investigate just, even if it's the three that's demarcated right now, just ground lighting. Right? As opposed to full lighting? I don't know.
Yeah, we're.
Whatever, whatever minimum impact the neighborhood is, whatever that may be, I don't know.
I, I, I think we're very open to lighting again because it's, this lot is unique. It's not the dealership lot, so.
I, I, I can't recall seeing a topographical map. It might have been early drawings, but the way you've got the, the stormwater management, your, your, I mean, your topology is conducive to that, correct?
Yeah, so, um, we will be directing some of the water to the north side, which is in between the dealer, the site. I think that's going to be a natural low point. And then the property kind of slopes, uh, to the southwest where we have the other pond.
Okay.
We may have to do some things with guttering and piping and that kind of stuff to get there.
Yeah, because I think right where the dealership is, right, the, the topo is decreasing as you're coming to Fagan Avenue, right?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
It's a slope down there. Um, and, and one of the things that I always like to explore, which will most likely happen here, is the two landscape islands may turn into some sort of biotention. Um, some of the plantings, the plant may turn into some of that. We may end up breaking into much smaller treatment areas and trying to incorporate the two together. Um, I think for this, it was, those were kind of the two low points and it, and it, for schematic purposes, it says, hey, look, we've got some square footage here that we can use to treat stormwater.
Okay.
Okay. So a question for planning, is the parking lot as a primary use of a parcel permitted in CH? So it's.
Huge.
Yeah, we're going to need to make your recommendation and
Right.
move it on to the town board. And then, as you mentioned, then we'll come back, assuming the town board issues a special use permit, we'll get into the details with the photometrics and the water and so on and so forth. That's why I obviously don't want to spend, I don't want to spend your money now because you're going to see how far we get, right? So.
Yep.
So I guess the question is, how do we stand? Are, are we, are we, uh, feel comfortable with the design? Are we okay with the impacts on the neighborhood? I mean, I'll speak for myself as always. I mean, I like the design. I think the, uh, uh, the applicant has done a good job to, um, you know, throw a lot of green space in there and help shield the neighborhood. I think we can work through the lighting. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal that, uh, uh, that you're able to get a tractor trailer through the site, uh, to eliminate the concerns on South Fagan and also the safety concerns out on State Street. So I'm, I'm comfortable personally, uh, with moving this plan forward, but I just want to state that for the record.
I, I, um, I'm on the same page generally with the chairman. Um, a couple of missing pieces that I think I, I would prefer to have sort of are, um, sort of defining the sort of outer boundaries of what this, what, what is contained in the site plan. Um, I personally would like to see a, um, upon the recommendation of our Complete Streets Committee, a sidewalk that runs from Central, Central Ave all the way to Albany Street. And around the concerns that I've already mentioned, I, I really would like to see just some more, more of a, a full landscaping plan for your reconditioning site, recognizing that there's no proposed changes here. Um, I see in, in visiting the parcel myself, I see a lot of asphalt that's unused. And I, I would like to see the applicant mitigate some of the concerns that have been raised with adding impervious surface by maybe taking some away. And that would be just areas like right on the corner of Central and South Fagan, your aerial shows a couple of cars parked in the town right of way. Um, you know, I, my opinion is that should be landscaped similarly to what you see across the street. As an example.
And I'm going to chime in now. I'm still not willing to sacrifice two single-family homes that are the more affordable category that have direct access to the bus line to actually several bus lines on State Street. Uh, I know the underlying zoning is CH, but the fact is it's currently a neighborhood. It's residential. And I'm not willing to take part in destroying that.
Anybody else? Thoughts?
So the area has been zoned commercial highway for a very long time. Uh, the people did approach, um, approach my client in order to sell the properties, including the houses. Um, my client really does not want to act as a landlord for a property, nor the plan is to merge the three lots so that they function as a one, along with the conditioning lot, along with the dealer lot as part of their operations. So we would just respectfully request that we be allowed to proceed establishing the buffer on the other side before you hit the next residence down the road. The other question I have is regarding all the way to Albany Street. That's, uh, that's a very long distance. That's very expensive. That's not going to be something that we can accomplish. We don't own the right to put the sidewalk in there. I'm assuming that's a very narrow road, Fagan. Don't. Yeah, it, it's, the cost would be prohibitive to put the sidewalk all the way down to Albany Street from that point. It's almost, it's, uh, as, as we eyeballed it, it's like double what we're proposing to do now. So just to be clear.
Yeah. For the applicant's benefit, Laura, could you explain a little of how, how that works? Um, a, a landowner doing work in the town right of way off their parcel to accomplish one of those goals?
Um, well, I mean, even the adding of the sidewalk in here is in the town right of way, even on this plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, it's not unreasonable for them to add improvements in the right of way. I do know that sidewalks are very expensive and I understand why the Complete Streets would ask for it to go all the way to Albany. Um, it is, it, uh, it is a significant cost.
Yeah, and one of the things we, historically done, right or wrong, but tell me if you don't recall, but usually we ask for everybody to go to the property line, right? And then the next application comes in or the next change and we ask them to pick up and go along. Uh, that's what we typically do. So I can understand, uh, the concern from the applicant for cost personally. Um, I, I thought this was good to get this far personally, and I, you know, and I think it might be utilized by the, the neighbor of concern, actually, so. The neighbor that has the concerns, not the neighbor of concern, I'm sorry, but I feel like I respectfully, uh, agree with her concerns, you know?
I'd like a clarification. Is the intent to hold these three properties separate from the dealership lot? I was under the impression they were going to be combined with it.
I don't know that it makes a difference.
I think it does.
To, to us.
I don't know. Is it, do they stand alone if they combine the three properties or would they take the three properties and roll them into the current um, Kia lot? And I guess that'd be legal, we're planning on, I'm not sure how we, how that would be accomplished. You know, this would be a deed and they, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'd want to roll these.
A lot. It doesn't even actually have to be a deed. Um, I think that you, the planning department would probably recommend combining, at the very least, the. least, the three properties on South Fagan.
Right.
I don't know that it has to be incorporated. Those three have to be incorporated, because they're getting a special use permit. Do you have a thought on that?
If the special use permit runs with each individual, I don't think it matters either way. I think it's just semantics, like, that's the bottom line. I mean, from a standpoint of selling, just, you know, could you, in theory, later on just sell the parking lot, and then it wouldn't be part of the dealership? There might be some concern from that.
There is.
Right.
Well, I mean, if there was a concern that the parking lot might end up being used by somebody else, not the intent that we see here.
Yeah.
Could condition that or could restrict?
That's a fair point, because if it's a car dealership as the principal use, you may actually need to have the car dealership principal structure on the whole parcel. Yeah, you probably do have to combine them.
I think that's probably the better, cleaner way overall to put.
Yeah, to combine the lots with the State Street, 3900.
I don't have any reason for or against it, other than to say, is there, is there something I'm missing that, that it hurts me at some point by doing that?
I don't think so.
That you guys have seen in the past, that you can warn me about, because I have to advise our team, they're going to do that, and they're going to ask me why, and I'm not going to have an answer.
Yeah, so let's ask a question. If we combined it into the dealership, so it's a single lot, that's primary use car dealership, with a special use for a piece of it, which is parking lot? Right? I don't think that.
No.
So the parking lot becomes an accessory use?
You combine it.
Yeah. So the thing I'd like to, the thing I'd like to be able to prevent is sometime down the road, someone comes and puts another, wants to put another commercial use where the parking lot is right now, which involves a commercial building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, like a, like a mini Kia used car lot.
No, yeah, so the special principal use is automobile, automobile sales and service establishments. So I think that in order to be able to qualify for that special use permit, the lots would have to be combined eventually. But you still need to have the special use permit allocated by the town board over top of these three properties.
Just clarify, when you say combine the three lots, combined.
Into 3900 State Street.
And that's fine. We can, we can do that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, if that's a recommendation of the board.
Yeah, we don't have any examples where, but I could see where, if it was a separate parcel, if Kia were to like move somewhere else and sell the building, that, say that's a separate parcel, into Mr. Khan's point, you know, with somebody, you want to put a used car lot there, you know, and just put a little kiosk or a little building, we don't, no. Obviously, we don't want that. We expect that when, if this goes forward, you know, you seem like you're up and up, and that you would maintain it, and, you know, if it's part of the whole project, I think we got a better shot of making it work versus the potential of it being separated in the future.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't have a problem with that being, you know, part of your recommendation. And also, if you want us to put landscaping on that corner, we also don't have a problem with you making that part of the recommendation. We just kind of like to get on to the next step if we can.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, just as a planner, I still do not recommend taking down the second home. I just think that's very bad precedent, and I would never recommend that you guys do that. But as far as like extending the sidewalk all the way to Albany, I think maybe a better use is like what Ms. Backner was just talking about, is turning that island to green. And another thing that may be useful in exploring is that this project is impactful to a residential neighborhood. So anywhere that you can add buffers to the residential neighborhood is good. And I think Patrick was getting at this, but like, if there's a way to shrink this parking down a little bit and add a landscaping buffer on the south side, like landscape and buffer that residential property, and then, I mean, this would obviously have to be a conversation that you'd have to have with them, but I mean, maybe it's even a possibility in the right of way to add, if you're going to make this nice island, to extend it out a little. Because in the right of way, on town property, but right now, it's very confusing to people what that is. If you're able to just pull that island out a little bit, and she keeps her children safe, they play on that a lot, it's like their basketball court. I mean, I would definitely have that conversation with her, but you may, it may just be a better use of public funds, or not public funds, but to help protect the neighborhood, rather than bringing the sidewalk all the way down to Albany, is working on landscaping all these residential buffer areas, and making the entrance into the South Fagan just look a lot nicer.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge improvement.
I think that.
Yeah, I think, I think the land.
Huge improvement. The only thing that I would still recommend is shrinking it even more to save that house. And I don't think that you have to own it. I think you could just do a lot line adjustment for it to, you know, that would be my recommendation. But I do think that this plan has addressed a lot of our concerns. I just, I think it's just terrible precedent for us to can, like, let.
No, I agree.
One house that's super close.
And Laura, you know, we've had this discussion before, right? And so, and we contrasted with our, you know, Mohawk Golf Club, previous version of the application, right? The key difference there is that the zoning here is intended to be shared between commercial and, and neighborhood, right?
Yeah, I, there is a differentiation with the zoning.
Yeah.
I think the comprehensive plan is pretty clear that we don't want the creep of commercial zoning into the established residential neighborhoods.
Right.
Can I quote your comprehensive plan for the record?
Yeah, of course.
So for this specific area, it says, "One of the goals is to maintain and strengthen Niskiuna's existing diverse commercial and retail economic areas and maintain Niskiuna's fiscal base. Stafford Heights is well-known for its commercial areas." And commercial makes up 1% of your town. So I think the thing to keep in mind, the way I read the comprehensive plan, is they specifically talk about zoning creep when they start to talk about professional businesses and homes. And one of the concerns was, is you start to allow that and creep into these neighborhoods. So, and I think it's also important that this zone has been established forever and ever and ever. There's been eight comprehensive plans done, and they've never changed its own.
Yeah, I think Chairman Walsh was checking the reference.
And I think also.
I was looking at the reference that Laura stated, which is page 77. Do you have the page number you're on?
Yeah.
Yes, that's more of the general overview of the different, what do you call that, neighborhoods, right, to Stanford.
I mean, I didn't bring it with me, but I think where it says that Stanford Heights has well-established commercials zones is commercial areas, it also says Stanford Heights has well-established residential neighborhoods. I think it's both there.
And it does.
I was quoting.
It's also a residential zone.
Page 77.
Just inside the commercial and just out of it's all residential.
Yeah, the specific concern is that on the State Street corridor, they should maintain its low-density development that doesn't overwhelm and consume the adjacent residential neighborhoods. That's a direct quote. Yeah.
So, arcing, it's perfect. They talk about buildings overwhelming.
We don't have, like you said, 1%, we don't have a lot of, large business. I feel, you know, if we can help the business, that's part of my, my role also, you know, within reason. And I think this is within reason personally.
Where is the 1%? I'm not following where that number came, where did you get that number?
From your comprehensive plan.
1% of commercial?
1%, so this was in 2013, because that's when your plan was done. There were over 8,600 homes in 2013.
Oh, you're talking parcels.
And there was 86. They did it by land area.
Okay, by land area, parcels.
And they did it by a number of parcels.
Because it's about a 60-40 residential.
Tax.
Commercial tax base.
Yeah, you tax the.
Not by parcel, okay.
Yeah. You overtax the commercial to pay, that's also in your comprehensive plan. That's the idea, to reduce the taxes for residential.
And, and, you know, you're absolutely right. Niskiuna is very residential in nature, and if, and if the prior proceedings this evening haven't borne that out, then I can't help you. That being said, I think this, should this project come to fruition, would make Matthews Kia by far the largest auto dealership in the town. By, in terms of number of vehicle inventory? No, I'd go and count it, but I don't think so.
Yeah, much, much smaller cars.
What I'm saying is, you know, we don't have nearly the number of commercial uses in auto dealerships, so, so any increase is more significant therefore.
I agree.
And this, this is, you're taking three parcels that were residential use and turning them into a commercial use, and, you know, through, through a few iterations, I feel like we're almost at a point with, with some of the feedback you've received this evening to call for a resolution to make a recommendation to the town board.
Yep.
And we do understand that concern with the residential.
Yeah, it is the next step, and I, you know, yep, had to public.
And I, you know, I also do want to comment too, that, you know, and this is the point that Leslie brought up, right? So it's not only just residential and commercial, but this has a level of affordability where the residential is concerned, you know, but at the end of the day, you were approached by the owner, right? So I think that piece of the economic equation, we'd have to accept that it, you know, yes, it prevents accessible, you know, you know, more financially accessible housing for a future owner, but the current owner has made a decision to.
Well, I kind, I'm sorry, I do have to disagree with that though, because the owner on Ruffner Road also sold the parcel to the golf club. What their intent was when they sold the parcel to the golf club, we never know. And I think it's, you know, knowing why someone wants to sell the home, you know, to a commercial property versus put it up for sale, I don't know that the board gets down into those details.
Agreed, right? But we, we're not, we never stopped that sale, number one. And the issue we addressed with Ruffner Road, being zoned R1, was the demolition of a zoned R1 house, right, to put in a road. This, in this zoning at least, we're, we're making a shift between the residential and the commercial.
Well, I mean, just, I'm just being respectful again, though. You're taking down a home, and you're putting in a commercial driveway. It's not that different from a road. I, I mean, I think that, that development probably generates like, what, 15 cars? You know, in peak PM and AM, I, you know, how many cars are going to go in and out of this driveway in a peak AM and PM time?
Could be more.
Probably not that different, just.
We would, we would just respect the request. I mean, at some point, we just kind of have to say what we can do and what we can't do. And at this point, we would like to move forward with the project as it is. We see an advantage to having a buffer between the next house that is staying, and we just don't want to also cause trouble for ourselves in the future. So the, as I said before, the homeowners came to us, and they, they know the purpose for which we're using it, so they, they did understand that. And, and we really would prefer to move forward with the, with the project as we have now, with the tweaks that we talked about.
Okay, what I, what I heard from the project lead, we're ready to call for a recommendation, recommending the town board approve the special use permit, subject to site plan review, is what I heard.
Yeah, I think the timing's definitely right for a recommendation to the town board, how you would want to do your recommendation.
Well, I think we need to default that the recommendation is going to be a positive recommendation if people don't support that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm going to go back to what we're doing in the previous one, and still say that we should evaluate it against the criteria that we've, that's laid out in the 220-60, right?
Yes, should do it the exact same way.
Yep, exactly the same way.
Always.
Right.
I have one little follow-up, on the point I raised before. I've just gone through the schedule for commercial highway. I do not see parking lot as a principal permitted use.
Correct, that's why we were saying that they would have to remove the lot lines and combine it with 3900 State Street. That would be a requirement.
Well, you said it would be preferable, you didn't say it would be required.
Yeah, we'll kind of change that as we head to discussion.
Yeah.
And we're committing to that, Ms. Gold.
Okay.
All right.
I'm still not supporting it, but it is an improvement.
You can support a resolution for the next meeting, Laura?
Yeah, we can draft it for you.
Right, and in some way, shape, or form, I don't know, maybe this is a board process thing, but I think it is just like we do with recommendations to the ZVA. I think on these special use, we need to be a little more systematic about each of the factors.
So my recommendation.
Create a worksheet, or we do something, or.
We've, we've done this in the past on bigger special use permits. I think we did it with Kelts and a couple other ones, is that you guys, I mean, essentially it's in our code, you make findings. So are you the sole lead on this one, Patrick? Yeah, probably Patrick can work with the planning department to come up with his proposed findings that we would use in the packet to support a resolution. And the findings should incorporate the bullet points of the special use permit, which we've done before, and, and then the recommendations coming from the project lead.
And I'll help out that and review that also, so, thank you.
Yeah, you didn't chair this one, Patrick?
No, maybe I should have.
Well, we're all here with you, Patrick. You just have to be in the driver's seat and do the work.
Okay, sounds like we'll have a recommendation at the next meeting, and we'll, we'll see everybody where they stand.
Do you think you can provide a revised site plan with the, a little bit more detail on the reconditioning site?
Yeah, what was the timeline on that?
Well, to, for inclusion in the packet, yeah.
And this was, to go to the town board, I'm just sorry.
At our next meeting, which is the fourth Monday of.
27th March.
March, yeah.
Recommendation to town board.
Right.
In between then and now, you said it about a week. Get those, okay.
Right.
Can you send me a hard?
And those would be, you know, good things for when we're reviewing for the points, you know, obviously the increase in the landscaping along State Street, and so on and so forth, and help validate, you know.
Okay. Laura, do you mind just shooting me or Clark a quick email with just that hard date that you need the?
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, please, thank you.
Yeah.
Hit the lock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Not as much as Chase Bank, if they're still online, though. They're still with us.
Compliance signs.
See if they want that sign back.
Yeah. Oh my God, I guessed three hours for tonight, I guess, I guess we're wrong.
You lost that bet, no?
Lost that bet.
No.
No, we'll do what takes, of course, always, so.
Oh, I must say, the timing of it thing worked out okay, so that's good.
Yeah, so next is 2321 Mall Street, and that's to Chase Bank, and we gave them approval, but now we got to take a look at signage. Some of the signage that was submitted for the facades all meet the requirements of the code, but the ATM surround signage is something we need to take a look at. And the question is, do we have anybody online with the applicant?
He is here.
He do?
Yeah, he's here. I'm just going to.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Paul Landa. Would you like me to just be quite brief and to the point?
Sure, I think all we need to focus on is the ATM surround sign, since the other signage is compliant.
Fantastic. Clark, I don't know if someone got that updated drawing with the size of those letters on the ATM, or how I could transmit that to your team right now, but I'm not seeing them on the screen. Thank you all for being here.
It should be in the folder.
Oh, you can also, if you've got it on your computer, Mr. Landa, you can also share your screen.
I might not be the best person for that. I will speak to it.
Okay.
Trust me. I don't, I don't want to waste your time. I'm going to read this to you guys, because it's been late, and I don't want to get long-winded, and I'm trying to address concerns of yours, as well as represent my clients. I am an agent for Chase this evening. Chase had intentions to also accompany me in this hearing, but the person who was best suited had dental surgery. He extends his apologies. We've reviewed your code and the overlay codes. We feel that generally, like you just stated, we're within, we're within reach of the parameters laid out. As you're aware, this project consists of three signs. Chase Bank is, is kind of mercantile business, but it's also an institution. I want to keep that umbrella over this as, as we move forward. This location in the strip center lends itself to what we are proposing, we believe. The third sign, I won't speak to the wall sign, I won't speak to the tenant directory sign. You guys have already addressed the ATM on the outlot, which is great, and we appreciated the feedback there. So let's go to the third sign. This in-wall ATM has a small branding sign on it. What you're seeing there is 2.3 square feet. Some may consider this, as a consumer, an informational sign by having the actual copy and logo there, the branding. Some may not. Um, but keep in mind, there are expectations that come with an ATM, as you all as users are aware of. Um, generally, an ATM has different purposes for a different consumer at different locations. Uh, the other thing that may come up in our communication tonight is the lighting. The lighting is minimal, the lighting is there because of public safety measures, it goes in tandem with other security features. It's a proven situation that an ATM needs to be lit up. Um, the setback and the buffers, uh, in between that setback are considerable, hopefully, hopefully, we don't need to address the lighting too much. Um, as your team reflects on this, uh, I, we all recognize that a waiver is probably needed for this second sign. Um, I, I'm gonna bring up a couple of quick points, we feel strongly that since it is an institution, we wanna give you something to hang your hat on for this waiver, and that would be going back to an institution. Just like we wouldn't drop, uh, FedEx labels, labeled packages into a United States postal service mailbox. An ATM is sometimes used in the same way. And, and we really don't feel that one can assume that just due to the proximity of this ATM to that Chase sign and business necessarily gives the person who is going to use that ATM piece of the institution uh, all the information they need. So we're seeking a review and a motion to approve the sign package as we have proposed it. Um, we appreciate your consideration for it being a second sign. We, we know that there is some precedent for a second sign in this overlay district, and, um, that's about as succinct as I can get it, tried to address some of the things that I feel your community and your board would be concerned with. Um, and if you can't find the copy of that, uh, particular drawing, for some reason, let me give you the dimensions of that sign and logo, so that you have them right in front of you, and this would be, uh, this would be the, uh, the sign on the ATM. The, the height of the C for Chase is basically eight inches, it's seven inches, seven and seven-eighths inches. And the overall width of that entire is, uh, three foot six inches, really, three foot six and an eighth inches. Um, and, uh, you may also look at the, uh, blue band around there as another area that might be logo, you know, somewhat considered a logo. So that's what I got for you guys, let's, let's get to the nuts and bolts and see what I, see what I missed in the way you guys are thinking.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate that, and thank you for hanging out with us again tonight. Um, just, the only question I had is the, uh, I'm, I'm personally, again, I'm, I'll just tell, tell you where I stand, I'm, I'm okay with the second sign with Chase on the ATM, right? I just, I wanna just question the blue on the lower, so I look at it as two rectangles, right, the upper around the Chase, and then the bottom, what's, what material is that, is that, is that stainless, or is it, uh, metal, or what, do you have any idea what that's made out of?
So, so, you're talking about the blue, and then, this is all an acrylic type product.
Okay. So, so what I was gonna suggest, you know, one of the concerns is with the town center overlay district is with the colors, right? That's the colors concern we had with the drive-through. Uh, could we, you know, just suggestion, see if the board thinks, could the, uh, the blue be removed, the bottom three legs of the, the rectangle be removed and just keep the, the upper Chase with the, uh, corporate logo and just the blue around the top? Is that something that could be done? Is that reasonable? Yeah, just a rectangle on top?
Yeah, surrounding the chase.
Yeah. See what I'm saying, Mr. Landa, does that make sense?
Is, is, I, I thought you were asking your board, so, so if your board would appreciate that, then let's, let's move forward with that, that discussion.
Well, I want that, is that possible that it could, is it, because it's acrylic, that just the upper portion could be the blue rectangle?
We expect, we're, we're expecting a little give and take tonight, Commissioner, Chairman, uh, so, so yes, we're, we're hoping we can get a sign, and we're expecting to concede something to your team, so if that's the concession, then.
Well, that's a suggestion, so let's see what the, the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah, I think it's better than the, than carrying that blue all the way around.
Yeah, that's all.
I, I, I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little confused just from the photographs, exactly where is this ATM, it's, is it in the wall of the building, or?
I think they're gonna change the windows.
It just looks a little weird on the photo, right, this, this is not just me, right? Yeah. And that's what I thought, I thought last week, okay, good, I just want, so this is in the wall of the building, right next to the building, right, it's not, yeah.
One continuous plane, as it is existing.
Yeah, yeah, got it, yeah, so I definitely agree with Chairman Walsh, that if you just have the blue rectangle around the chase, that's better than having it.
Down the sides and across the bottom.
Yep.
It limits, it limits the amount of color, it's not, you know, desired in the town center overlay district, that's all. But, it's a give and take, because you still get the sign, you still get the blue, just it's minimized, I guess. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so who motions?
Well, let's, let's, yeah, let's hear it the rest of the board members, whether they, they agree with that or have any concerns.
All right.
I actually like it better with the other blue as well. I, I think if you're in that area, visibility is not all that great, I think it helps to further identify it. Uh, it definitely needs a sign, and I'm okay with.
Yeah, I mean, a sign is one thing, right, that's one waiver, it's just the color. So I thought I was just trying to help out the board by, did make a recommendation, if the board feels it's okay as is, I'm, I'm.
I'm pretty easy on this one. I, I know the area, it, it really needs something that gets their attention.
I like it as is as well.
Okay, I can go with that.
About.
I'm, I'm fine either way.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can live with it as is.
Well, that makes it easier. I just was trying to.
It's really dark there.
Get there, to be honest with you, so.
I mean, it's not a question of dark or light, it's a question of just, you know, minimizing. Anyway, that's, I, I can.
Well, the blue's not illuminated, right, it sort of looks illuminated in the, um.
Yep, we're good, I'm good, I'm good with it.
The white looks very bright.
Yeah, I think that might be partly the rendering, though, doesn't show the shade underneath the canopy.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it definitely is dark there, but we'll have some new light, though.
Yeah, like Clark and I didn't feel comfortable approving it administratively because of the colors.
No, I agree, and so, if the board's good with it, I'm good, but, uh, we still need to have a resolution, or can we do it with a vote? All right, yeah, so we need to have a resolution approving it, but what I'm hearing from the board, Mr. Landa, is that, uh, we're okay as is with the second sign and, as shown.
God bless you.
Yeah.
And it's good to see your government in action and all the people take pride in their community, it really is, I attend hearings all across the nation, so congratulations to your group.
Okay.
We appreciate your patience.
Yeah, thank you, and we'll have the resolution for our next meeting of approving the package I submitted.
Fantastic, you need anything more from me, or will Clark just get ahold of me?
Clark will just get ahold of you.
I mean, we, we, we got rid of a lot of blue with the standalone ATM signs.
Yeah, that's why.
That standalone ATM sign looks really good.
It, it looks slick, and to be honest with you, Chase likes it, so.
Yeah, I know, that's why you could have made your blue border on the sta, on the ATM at the wall, you could have made it into gray too, but forget it, we're good.
Yeah, we're good. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Landa.
Have a great evening, you both, and enjoy your storm, it's coming, but I'm sending sun your way from the Midwest.
Yep, stay away, stay away from the FDIC, please, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, let's see, uh, anything under reports tonight?
I don't have anything unless you guys have specific questions.
Yeah, I'll just open up commission business, anybody have any questions for the, uh, planning department, or for legal?
I thought the timer went well.
Timer went well, thank you.
That worked that well.
I think we only had one that I had, had asked to summarize, so that, that worked well, and I think people were pretty respectful of time, they moved it right along. So I thought that was good. Still long, but it was good, you know.
And, and, and you know, even with all the, you know, concern from the community and everything else, I'm actually glad we can now have some technical, detailed technical discussions around the Mohawk Golf Club application.
Nope, it was a good meeting. All right, all right, nothing else, anybody? Okay, I'll have a motion to adjourn then.
So, most.
Move by Leslie Gold, and, uh, all those in favor, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I can second Jengus.
Yes.
Did Jengus second it?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Sometimes you just, yeah, thank you, everybody, appreciate.
All right.
Be careful out there.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
And hopefully, next time I'll be there in person.